Welcome to the regular meeting in K-12 City Council. The date is January 11, 2023. This meeting now comes with order.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Welsh.
We come here tonight to celebrate the beauty of this city. The beauty of the weather that we have and the beauty of the people who live here. We celebrate the fact that we have a government that listens to its people, in which we have a voice, in which we can speak and make suggestions. We celebrate tonight a government in which we elect our officials and are heard.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
All present.
Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes or do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a presentation about a traffic light at De Navara and Del Prado, and I was hoping we could get that before citizens' input after approval of minutes, just because I think there are people here to speak on that. Is that something we can do?
Sure, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve of that change.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with that change. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item six is recognitions and achievements. We do not have any listed tonight. Item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting of December 7, 2022?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 14, 2022?
Motion to second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Mr. City Manager, this is where we've moved up the discussion for the traffic signal at the intersection of Del Prado Boulevard and De Navara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, for the opportunity to clear the air, so to speak, with regard to this particular item. I know that over the last day and a half, you've received numerous emails from our residents about this particular issue. And as Councilmember Cosden mentioned, it's likely that we have several individuals in the audience today who are interested in this topic. So we thought it was actually necessary to go ahead and put everything into context and provide the background information with respect to this particular intersection, because I know there's been a lot published on social media that makes it seem like the city is either unaware of the issue or just not interested in resolving the issue. And I can tell you that that is pure fiction. And so I'm going to have a variety of staff members come up to the podium to be available to answer any questions. But first, we'll start off with Mr. Mark Mason giving you a quick walkthrough of the particular issue. And then Mr. Ilchison and his staff from Public Works is also available, as is Chief Sizemore, to talk about any enforcement-related actions associated with this. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mason to kind of frame the issue for you in terms of how we got to where we are and what's next on the horizon. Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Real quick, back in 2005, the City Council approved an ordinance establishing a planned development project, otherwise known as the PDP, that was entitled Entrada. And it was located at the north end of Del Prado Boulevard. Included in that ordinance, which was subsequently amended by ordinance 1016, was a provision stating that the Entrada organization or the Entrada group would be responsible for constructing a traffic signal when the intersection warranted the traffic signal. Okay? So in 2005 and again in 2016, it had not yet warranted a traffic signal according to the traffic rules regarding the need for traffic signals. Within the both of those agreements, there's a section that explicitly states that the city shall not participate in the funding of these improvements. In other words, the responsibility for the improvements were based where, as a result of the PDP, were on the property owners that were in that area and, you know, as a, as part of the PDP. So just again, a little bit background. The intersection is warranted for a traffic signal. The warranting of the traffic signal happened in November of 2019. The Entrada Community Association has approved a design, and they have, they have, they have a design for the traffic signal. At the same time, they've gone out and they have secured a contractor to do the traffic signal. However, they don't have the full funding in order to proceed with it, so they have not yet signed the contract to have the poles manufactured and come in and install. And just like us or anybody else, you know, when you don't have all the money and you're, you know, you're not guaranteed that you're going to get the money, that you're not going to enter into a contract until such time as you know that you're going to have the funding. And so the Entrada, so the Entrada Association has, as I said, a contractor. They don't have the full funding for the work. And this is as a result of some holdouts that have not made payments based upon the two times that they've done the billings in '20 and '21. I'm sorry, '21 and '22. And the Entrada Astros Association has asked the city's help. So they've asked our help in order to move this along while they continue to pursue the collections. So as part of that, as a proposal, we're recommending that you advance up to, it's now $100,000 because three of the holdouts, two of the holdouts have actually paid within the past week. So now we would be at advance up to $100,000 to the Entrada Community Association. And in order for them to enter into the contract, they would enter into the contract, they would, you know, the contractor would have the poles manufactured. And over approximately a nine-to-12-month period, we would end up having the signals installed at that traffic, at that intersection. So part of this, in order to achieve this, because the PDP, which is an ordinance, which by, by any other term is a law, restricts us from participating, you know, with, with, on a monetary basis. In order to do this, we would have to amend the ordinance to PDP. That will not keep the Entrada Association from moving forward. It's just one step in the process in order for us to do this. At the same time, we would enter into an agreement between us and the Entrada Community Association to advance the funds and set the terms for reimbursement. In this particular case, knowing how long it takes to collect sometimes, whether or not they would have to go through a foreclosure process, et cetera, we would look at about two years to reimburse us back the funds that we would advance. If it hasn't already been paid by the time, you know, this is all finished. They would also post a bond with the city, ensuring the reimbursement at the end of the two years if the collection of the funds has not yet occurred at that period of time. So one way or the other, we're going to get the funding back to us. But we're recommending that we certainly go forward and help them along in order to get the traffic signal installed. In the interim, it, they'll, you'll, the traffic folks, Public Works will be up here in a minute. They're going to, they're looking at putting in a split-left diversion. And it means all of these things, but I think really it's the picture that helps. It tells a thousand words. So you want to come up and talk about it a little bit, Mike?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchison, Public Works Director. Prior to any accidents this week, city staff, Public Works, traffic engineering staff, were analyzing geometric changes at the intersection to look at what we could do to improve safety. So we know that the signal is coming. It's met warrants for a signal, but between now and the time that the posts and the arms and the, all the electronics are ordered, it takes time to deliver those, approximately six to eight months. Then you have to construct those, you know, it could still be nine to 12 months before the signal is actually operational. So we were looking at some changes to the intersection. We analyzed a couple of options. We looked at temporary signals. Temporary signals, as you may recall, were used during the hurricane at an existing intersection where the signals went down. However, they only basically do two-way directional traffic. So they don't handle left turns, they don't handle right turns. It's basically one way and then the other way. So we would have to basically close off left turns. We would have to close off a lot of movements through the intersection. In addition to that, they're not hooked up to any type of telemetry. So if they failed and went down, you could basically have, you could cause a conflict at the intersection with somebody who didn't have an operating signal. They don't have backups like a traditional has a primary and a secondary for a movement. In addition to that, we looked at striping the intersection to be a two-step movement. Most median, medians less than 20 feet are a single movement. So once you have a gap, you proceed all the way through to the other side, and then you continue to move forward. Medians that are greater than 20-foot in width can, can be eligible for a two-step movement, which basically would require us to stripe the median in the middle as kind of its own traffic or lane. So we would have a through lane, we'd have a left-turn lane and a right-turn lane with a stop sign. So basically, you would be looking at, looking at traffic to your left to make the first movement into the median. Then you're into basically a new travel lane, a new area, and you're looking at your traffic to the right to make your next movement into or across those travel lanes. Because of the two turn lanes, the north and southbound left-turn lanes, the ability to stack any type of traffic, any type of vehicles in that basically would allow one vehicle. So that, that doesn't really do much for us in the way of increasing safety, because you would still have somebody stacking out there for the through movement, somebody stacking out there for a left-turn movement, both east and west and north and south. So you could still have, you know, a bunch of people out there trying to clog up that intersection. So the, the next best thing is to directionalize movements through the intersection. So what we're looking at doing is continuing to allow the left turns in to Gator Circle and then into the De Navara back end of Entrada. Anybody coming out of those areas would need to make a right turn and then eventually come back with, you know, if you want to make the southbound or northbound movement, you would make a U-turn and then come back down. So it would add, you know, a minute to two minutes of your travel. However, much safer eliminates all the conflicts trying to get through and across that intersection. And in some cases, drivers, if, if they are, their primary movement is the one that's restricted, then they'll just seek an alternate route and avoid this intersection entirely, which moves more traffic away from the intersection. So with that, we'll open it up to any comments or questions about the agreement or the changes. We are, will be implementing these changes next week. I think we are mobilizing staff Tuesday.
Mr. Ilchison, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Mr. Ilchison, would you also please address a related issue? And that is the situation at the intersection of Avril and Del Prado. And can you please tell us how long your department has actually been working on signalizing that intersection? And especially in light of the fact that City Council did approve funding for that intersection last fiscal year?
I knew you were going to ask that question, so I prepared this slide, which you have not seen. So we are also working on a traffic. So different than the intersection at De Navara and Del Prado, there is no agreement with a condo association or master association related to funding and who's going to pay for a signal. The city is at, right now, is in process of designing the signals at Del Prado and Avril. We had, we engaged a firm in December. We anticipate the design being complete in May. And then we will order basically what has been designed and then install that signal. So the design of this signal is expected to be completed in May. We'll issue a bid for that. We should be under construction this fiscal year. And then we'll have, when we bring that contract to you, it'll have the, the duration of the construction. So if everything goes well, both of these signals will be in place here within, within the next fiscal year.
Mr. Ilchison, can you please address why you just can't simply go to a contractor and buy these traffic signals and mast arms off the shelf?
Yeah, so based on the design, the geometric design of the roadway, whether it's angular, whether it's right angle. And here, we have a curve. Whether or not it's two lanes, three lanes, a single lane, a post, all the factors that relate to the amount of traffic moving through, whether, you know, how long those mast arms need to be, the wind load rating to how many heads that need to be mounted on there. Because again, you have to have two signals. In case one fails, you still have another signal that can carry that while one goes out. The size of the pole base is then, so once you figure out what you need for the actual above-ground, then the base, all the stuff underground that supports that thing from tipping over, all needs to be designed to handle the weight load and the wind load during hurricanes. There needs to be underground survey. So each one of them are designed for the particular intersection and the geometric approaches at that intersection. Could be all-throughs, could be lefts, could be rights, could be double-lefts. Every one of them is individually designed to, to meet the specifications needed at that intersection. Then those are then sent out and actually ordered to be built, basically built to suite, and then they're shipped to the city.
Councilmember Hayden.
Mike, Mark, based on the timeline that you just said, I thought you said at least at the De Navara intersection, it would take about a year to get that stoplight up and running?
From the time that they enter into the contract.
Right, but it sounded, it sounded like they were already in a contract.
They're not.
They're not, and I thought you said, I thought you said they had picked out a design and had a contractor, no?
They have designed it. The design has been approved by the city and by the county. They have a contractor ready to go, but they haven't entered into the agreement because they don't have the full funding for it.
Right, but if, if we approve the funding tonight, okay, that means the funding is in place.
Correct.
Right? And it's still going to take a year. Although you said, because the other lights, a different situation, a different funding source, that we could get that one done this fiscal year. So I'm trying to understand why there's a disparity and when things could get done.
I, I think what he meant was, is the design will be done in May.
Right.
And when the design is done, then we go out for a bid, and then it's 12 months from that point.
Oh, okay, so it will not be done.
So they'll both be done next fiscal year.
It will not be done this fiscal year, okay.
Correct.
I just wanted some clarification. And on those two, those two left turns, visually, as people are turning left one way and there's people coming to turn left the other way, is there any visual restraints there that will be tough to see to, to make those turns?
So this is a very similar application to what is in place now at State Road 78 and Skyline, State Road 78 and Cultural Park, and more recently, State Road 78 and Hibiscus. So what happens here is the car that is next in queue to cross-traffic is positioned in a, in, basically, they're positioned right at the travel lane that they need to see through, and there's not a bunch of people trying to cut across, blocking them or people stacking. So this positions the cars in such a manner that they're able to see the oncoming traffic without being blocked by people stacking in the.
And we're extending those left-turn lanes so that, because there's probably going to be a high number of cars that are going to be turning left, at least from, from one of those onto the road. So we're going to have enough room for, let's say, 15, 20 cars?
Yeah, you, if you, I don't know if you can see in the image now, there's, you know, on the, on the northbound movement, you could see two little cars there. There's probably enough room for 30 cars in that entire turn lane.
Okay, and those that, can you also, you, you mentioned it at the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting today, where the U-turns will be?
Yeah, so the U-turn movement for the, if you're coming, so this is, Del Prado at this intersection is running east and west. So if you're on the northbound De Navara and you want to make a left to head south on Del Prado or, or west on Del Prado, you would need to make a right-hand turn and go north to 41 and make a U-turn. Or if you want to avoid this area altogether, you can, you can go out 41 to Pine Island and head south or 41, out De Navara to 41. Or if you're within Entrada, you could enter out the main gate and make a left at the main gate. If you're coming from Gator Circle and you want to make a north, northbound or eastbound movement turn across the intersection, you would head south or west. Go to the Entrada U-turn, make a U-turn there and head north. Or if you're heading south, you could head out the south end of Gator Circle, either at Avril or by Andalusia. So there's, if it, depending on where you live, depending on what, whether you're delivering or you're commuting, you know, the drivers will shift accordingly and either avoid this if they can or, you know, add a couple more minutes to their route in the morning for the safety.
Thank you, Mayor, if you say. And when is this project supposed to be completed? I know we're starting.
Three, three days. So it'll start Tuesday and it'll be done Thursday, so it'll be in place for next weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmembers. Sorry, the following.
Is the $100,000 that we have to provide an advance for, is that first money? Is that last money? And what type of security interest do we have in having it repaid?
The security interest in this particular case would be a bond that they would take out in order to reimburse us. And this would be through an agreement that we would have with the community, with the Entrada Community Association. And they have agreed, their board has agreed to do all of the things that I just, I just talked about. As far as first in, first out or last out, we would not pay them until they're ready to make the actual payment if they haven't already done so. So I'm not going to send them a check tomorrow if you all approve this on consensus tonight. But it would be when they're ready to make, start making payments, that's when we'd have that conversation. Because that, it, all things being equal, they're not going to stop trying to collect on the three properties that have not yet paid. That will be a continuous process, you know, until, until they do pay.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. City Manager, are you looking for a motion tonight to move forward on this? Or is this something, once you have that agreement in place?
I think I'm looking for consensus. That is enough for us to move forward. We ultimately still have to bring back a contract and the PDP amendment to the City Council anyway for a formal vote. My understanding is that if we get consensus from City Council today, that that's essentially all that Entrada needs to move forward.
Okay, I, we'll go down the, the line. We'll start with Councilmember Cosden. Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to, to again, put this issue in perspective and allow us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item eight, as citizens' input time. Citizens' input has a maximum of 60 minutes, is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We are going to utilize the podium in the center of the room for citizens' input. I want to bring to your attention our new time clock, which is in front of me. That shows the three minutes. So while you are speaking, you will be able to monitor your own time.
Hi, thank you for taking this input. My name's Debbie Wheeler, and I've been living in the Cape for 45 years. I taught high school for 30 years, just so you understand where I'm coming from. This intersection at Del Navio and Del Prado Extension is a menace to our society, our community. There are 1,700 students coming out of Island Coast High School onto that menace every single day with 80 staff members. You've got un, children that don't know how to drive as well as some of us do. And it's been, it's going, we're going to end up killing one of them. And I, as a teacher, will not, is, don't want to do that. We've watched too many times things happening. You, as a city council, are able to reduce the, the speed limit on that city-owned street. The staff is not allowed to, but you are. It's 50 miles an hour. Yesterday, one of my students that is now an adult with two children was sitting at the intersection when a car got hit broadside and ended up on top of his car. Would you have liked that call? I am a child advocate. You guys need to do something about it. This about this a year in advance. We're going to do this, we're going to do that. We've been hearing about this. I've lived in that area for 12 years. I used to live in the South Cape. We never had any problems there. Everything was taken care of like this. The North Cape has become a stepchild, and we do not get anything done. We have no stop signs, no streetlights, and no crossings for our high school. You are responsible for the people on your street. And if you'll check it out, Del Prado Extension is owned by the city, not by anybody else. So it's your responsibility. So when one of those children die, it's their responsibility to make sure it's not happening. I watch those kids leave, and I'm sorry. They're done at the end of the day, and sometimes they're speeding, as we do. But we have a right and an obligation to take care of our children. And just putting these traffic things, then they're not even going to know how to do this. So somebody needs to do something or get your police up there and have them there at the end of the day to direct these children to a safe home. And I'm sorry I'm so emotional, but I love children, and I would not want that on my back that I didn't do anything. Reduce the speed on Del Prado. You, as a council, are allowed to do that. Staff is not. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping.
Hi, good afternoon. Tahida Mati, United States Small Business Administration, the SBA, temporarily deployed here. First, I want to say thank you to the city for helping us spread the word while we were here, boots on the ground, making sure that people understand how and how to get help to recover from Hurricane Ian. Just a couple of updates. Anyone in the audience or watching on TV, just know that the physical deadline to submit your application with FEMA and SBA is tomorrow. Time has come upon us, and that deadline for physical damages is tomorrow. Close of business tomorrow. SBA continue to be staffed at all of the disaster recovery centers, along with FEMA. We are, also have standalone business recovery centers. Here in Cape Coral, we actually have the benefit of having a business recovery center on Santa Barbara Road, 360 Santa Barbara. And right next door is a disaster recovery center. So any SBA applicant can go into either one of those centers to submit their application. SBA, the referral process. For anyone who was referred by FEMA to the SBA, complete your application. If for some reason the SBA cannot help you, it is an automatic process. We'll send your application directly back to FEMA for additional grant consideration. I just want to mention that SBA is a low-interest rate loan as well. Homeowners, renters, businesses of any size, nonprofit organizations. And if you want to put your application in online, you can just go to sba.gov. go to sba.gov backslash disaster. I recommend just flooding the disaster recovery centers to get all of your questions answered. If you've had a denial, a reconsideration, you need to appeal your, um, application in any kind of way. Go talk to them at the disaster recovery centers. They're waiting, um, ready for people to come in and get their last-minute questions in and answered. Um, and I believe that is all that I have. Oh, I do want to mention that, uh, for business owners, you do have another deadline of June twenty-ninth, twenty-two, twenty-three, to submit an application for working capital. If you were closed during the disaster, or you're still closed, um, we will help, the SBA is able to help, uh, to help you keep and stay in business, as if Hurricane Ian never happened. Pay your taxes, pay your light bill, any regular expenses that your business have. And with that being said, that is all that I have. Um, thank you so much. I do want to mention, uh, even though the deadline is tomorrow, close of business, the, uh, recovery centers will remain open. So just get in there and ask, um, ask any question that you may have. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information.
Good evening. How are you? Um, first, I just want to thank Mr. Gunter. I've sent you several emails, and you actually got one back at seven-thirty at night. So thank you very much for that. Mr. Hernandez, you too. Appreciate that. So I am talking about de Navarro and Del Prado. I understand the funding is now in place to get these lights done. That's great. Um, I would ask whoever is in charge of that to move this process through as quick as possible. I personally would like to stop having to stand on my lanai when my kids and my wife leave the house, listening for crashes. It's terrible. People on this board, I've seen emails four years ago, "The lights are on the way. The lights are on the way." Four years ago. There's been fifty, seventy-five accidents in that timeframe. It's terrible. Terrible. As far as diverting the traffic, if you do not lower the speed on that stretch, all you're doing is transferring the accidents from Del Prado and de Navarro down to you right in front of Entrada. Because the way that road curves, and the way the road dips, it's really, because I don't, in the morning, I don't try to make that turn on, to go to forty-one. It's dangerous. So I go the other way. And way the way, the way that road tilts, it's hard to see the oncoming traffic in the morning. So if you don't lower that speed down, you're just transferring the location of the accidents. So I implore all of you to, one, move this through as fast as possible, and two, we gotta lower the speed. At least until the traffic lights are put in, that we gotta drop that speed on that road. Fifty miles an hour is too fast. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
How you doing? My name is, uh, Michael Vitale. I'm here to talk about the peddling and solicitation ordinance here. Um, I have a lot of concerns, being that solicitation, time and time again, has been ruled a constitutionally protected activity. And I, I work for a public justice firm, and I'm down here in this area with all good intentions on helping people. And this ordinance allows criminalization of a constitutionally protected activity. Um, even, um, every section of this ordinance itself weaponizes the police to cite someone and arrest somebody for just hearsay statements. And section thirteen dash three, which seems to be the most obvious, "Any peddler enters a premises owner lease, but other having, after being told to notify by the owner to leave, shall be, shall, shall leave immediately and not return." There's a reason that, uh, every state has a trespassing, uh, statute, and the police are the ones that issue that criminal notice of trespassing. Because if anybody just didn't seem to like the individual, what they looked like, like they were, what they were wearing, agenda, race, religion that they are, they could just submit a hearsay statement to the police, and that individual will be cited for simply exercising his constitutionally protected, uh, rights. And I, I really, I really think the council should revisit this, considering, uh, the neighboring for Myers, their ordinance was deemed unconstitutional. And pretty much every ordinance that restricts speech, uh, solicitation in Florida has been shut down. But yet, yours is still up and active and, and being aggressively enforced. I was cited on Fri-, uh, last Friday for simply knocking on doors and talking to people. And I think this is an egregious violation of civil rights of anybody that comes with good intentions to try to help anyone in this city. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Sarah Kyle, admin of the Facebook group, Gator Circle in the Loop. Um, I appreciate the presentation that was given today. However, as others have mentioned, we have been promised numerous times that we will have lights at these intersections. We are asking today that the City of Cape Coral put in the lights. Cape Coral citizens of northeast Cape have been promised stoplights on Del Prado, at the de Navarro, and Avril intersections by the City of Cape Coral for years. Our area continues to grow exponentially, and both of these intersections continue to become more and more dangerous to the residents in these neighborhoods, to the wives, husbands, mothers, fathers, grandparents, children, the students driving to Island Coast High School, employees of area businesses, and those just driving through on their daily commute. We just had another accident yesterday morning. For the month of December, we had an accident on twelve-seven, twelve-fifteen, two, at the exact same time, at de Navro and Avril on December twenty-third, and we finished out the month on twelve-twenty-nine. At the Gator sake, or Gator Trail's groundbreaking, Ms. Cosden herself told me that they were putting in the lights at de Navro in November of twenty-twenty-one. That was over a year ago. We are tired of the years-long promises. We are tired of the blame game, pushing accountability off to others. We are sick and tired of the continual accidents. City of Cape Coral Government, you are responsible for each and every ignored plea, each and every injury. It is time to do your job and put in the lights. Hold the developers accountable and send them the bill that we need you to put in the lights. How many people need to get hurt? How many people are we waiting to die? How big does the lawsuit have to be to get attention that we citizens will have to pay for when the inevitable happens? Please, put in the lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Bernadette Riley, and I've lived in the Gator Circle community, uh, since twenty-twelve. This has been an ongoing problem, ever since I've lived here. And then the City of Cape Coral has issued numerous building permits for new houses. There's a building explosion. Why wasn't this planned for ahead of time? Because you knew it was going to happen. A year from May is unacceptable. We really need to get moving on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and, uh, thanks to the camera person who's moved away from my stomach. I appreciate that. That was good. Uh, hey, so, a lot of stuff going on. Uh, I'm new here. Uh, so Cape Coral's awesome. Really glad my, uh, wife and I moved here in April. Loving it. Last November, I heard this thing on WINK, which, uh, it's, you know, news station wherever, picking, picking up on that. Heard that I'm going to be getting a bill for thirty-five grand to hook up water to my house. I am not stoked about that. Um, a- and I don't think any of you all were like, "Hey, I'm going to charge Gabe thirty-five thousand dollars," or something. He pays zero for right now. Um, but I'd like to, you know, maybe see some more action from the council on stopping that. Uh, I appreciate, water systems are expensive. You know, I, I don't know anything about it. I used to, uh, be a comptroller for a military installation, got to deal with a lot of civil engineering projects. I know they're expensive. And I know they're complicated, and they take a really long time. Where my house is, it's going to be, I think we're in zone seven, zone six, something like that. So we're like twenty, thirty-five. I don't want to get a bill for thirty-five thousand dollars that's inflation-adjusted. That's not okay. All right? City, you guys are doing everything that you can. I appreciate it. Sounds like there's a big struggle with the traffic light. But if, if we can't handle a traffic light, you guys are going to ask me to pay you thirty-five grand for a water system? So last year, twenty-twenty-two, uh, there were two-hundred-and-twenty boil water notices issued by the City of Cape Coral. Two-hundred-and-twenty. The way that works out, that means sixty percent of the time, there was, there was a boil water notice in effect for the whole year. Six out of ten days. I was going to have a boil, if I had been hooked up to city water, I would have had to boil it. I don't have to do that at my house of a nice well system. If I have a problem, I can call somebody, and it won't be six months for the traffic light assessment. It'll just be as soon as I pay them. All right? Can, can we please reconsider this? I appreciate maybe some of the zones, you know, it's, the ship has sailed, or whatever. And I, you know, for those residents, maybe we can figure out a better way to make it so that it's not each resident's responsibility. But we really need to stop this train from going any further, because it's a ridiculous price. I'd have to re-drill a well like ten times to recoup the cost of thirty-five thousand dollars. It, it's obscene. And, and the thirty-five grand, that doesn't even cover the water usage that I want to be charged. It's not like thirty-five grand gets me free water for life. Thirty-five grand gets me water for, well, it doesn't actually get me water at all, because I have to pay another fifteen grand to hook the main up to my house. Yeah, that sucks. Uh, I appreciate all of you what you do. Like, in the, when you, when you go for the soundbite, "We need a water system in the city." Yep, that sounds great. I'd like water, too. But I have water. And I have a septic system. I'd rather maybe be hooked up to city water. I'm okay with that, but not for thirty-five grand. Maybe ten grand. I don't know what the right price is, but that one's not it. So if you guys could, get it on the agenda, do whatever we need. I'll come back when I, uh, have more than ten seconds. And again, thanks to whoever took the camera off my belly. I, I really appreciate that one. Have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, thank you. Um, I first moved to the Gator Circle area in twenty-thirteen, and in twenty-seventeen, I reached out, um, to the city to advocate for a traffic light at de Navro, because I thought it was just getting too dangerous. Um, I had some remarks prepared tonight, but after hearing what happened, um, earlier, I wanted to deviate from those a little bit. I think a lot of the problem is, when I first reached out to the city in two thousand seventeen, I was given a lot of false information, or misleading information at best. Um, again, we saw that tonight, when I think it was, you know, a lot of, a lot of the responsibility is pushed onto the developer. I understand that. But you do have the ability to put in a light right away. It was even explained that there's an ordinance. It was described as a law that prohibits you from putting in a light, and that is factually incorrect. No city council can pass an ordinance that binds a future city council from passing another ordinance that, that reverses that. And I think you're all well aware of that. And part of the problem here is that we keep getting these false dates, and we keep getting false information from our representatives. I pointed out that it was the city council's responsibility, and not, not the developers. Um, early on, in my correspondence with my city councilperson, and in August twenty-one, she responded to me, "I suppose one of eight." It is. But no way my colleagues would spend millions that a developer should pay. Staff is working on legal ways to force the issue. You're perhaps the fiftieth person to contact me about this, but the absolute rudest, and that point remains. I don't want to be rude. I don't want to pick a fight with the city. I just want my family to be able to get home safely. And I want you to quit lying and do your job.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there. My name's Joanna Falcione. I also live in the Gator Circle community. Um, I'm not going to say anything that you guys haven't already heard. Um, all we're here for is just to get you guys to really see how dangerous it is for us to get our kids to school every day, and for us to get to work every day. Um, in two thousand seventeen, me and my husband and my son were involved in a very serious car accident, and it completely changed our entire lives. And we had emailed the city, of course, you know, and we got the same story from the developer doing it. And now, with the double accident the night before Christmas Eve, and the five, uh, the four-car pileup yesterday morning, I don't take my two-year-old out of my house, because I'm, there's no safe way to get out of my neighborhood. And, you know, I would like to take him different places. And I thank you so much for the park, because it's amazing, and it's something that we can do, where I feel safe, and I can get to it with him. But that was like eight-point-something million dollars, and we had that money for that park, but we don't have a hundred thousand dollars for just a light to make it safe. There's seventeen-hundred, I think, kids that go to Island Coast High School. And so at seven o'clock in the morning, and at two o'clock in the afternoon, it's a death trap to get anywhere. It's so dangerous. And the, the man that we did hit, it wasn't my husband's fault, and he just, he stopped at the stop sign, he crossed over into the median. And like the guy was saying, if you readjust that, even if you stop in that median, you can overshoot how far the traffic is, or how fast they're going. Because some people really do, they go seventy miles on that road. And, you know, to, to check obituaries every day, looking to see if you're going to get arrested for vehicular manslaughter, it's something that I don't wish upon anybody in my neighborhood, or anybody in the city. And it's really important that we get this done immediately, because this has been six years since our car accident. And a week after our car accident, a man lost his leg on a motorcycle accident in the, in the intersection. There's been multiple, there's been a few deaths in the past, I think two between the two intersections, which is more than enough. And I would just hate for it to happen again. And a year is a very long time to wait. And we can't wait any longer. And there's got to be a, like someone said, you're just diverting that, if you do the U-turn thing, you're just diverting the danger to the next, and, and, because you can't take a U-turn, because people speed on Del Prado. So, and there's a blind spot. You can't see around that bend. So if you were going to do a U-turn, you got to go fast. So it's just, there's no safe way, other than just getting that light, controlling people from, you know, we have a lot of road rage in this city. There's a lot of impatient people. They, you know, they're in a rush. And if you're in a car, and they're in a truck, they're going to go around, you know, there's so much of that. And if you have a light, if they go through it, they're breaking the law. You know, that's, then they can be held accountable. Right now, if they're cutting you off and going around you like a crazy person, they can't be held accountable. Nobody saw it. Nobody, there's no law that they're breaking. You know, I mean, maybe aggressive driving, but it's, it's got to be more structured, and it's got to be done right now. Because we're only going to lose people. And that's the first intersection that you come from, from the north. So people entering Cape Coral, and they see a car accident once a week at that, they think, "What's going on with this city?" They just don't have the infrastructure to support the people that are moving here? But thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, I had also a speech, but everyone pretty much covered it.
Speak your name, please.
Oh, Jessica Sheen. Sorry. I lived in Gator Circle for over nine years. Um, my husband and I just opened an indoor golf facility, um, in the Entrada Plaza. So I'm speaking also, um, for that building as well, um, because, uh, we're also getting a lot of traffic coming from that plaza now, and that plaza's been empty for a long time. So, um, there's a coffee shop going in there, you know, our, uh, golf facility that just started, um, the arcade's getting really, really busy in there. So we're getting a lot more traffic going over that intersection. Um, so I just want to stand by, um, really stressing the fact that we really need something in there. Um, my fifteen-year-old just started, um, driving in October, um, and it's really dangerous for her. Um, so I just want to really stress getting that light in there and, um, saving some more lives. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Ed Bolter. A couple of years ago, I was tasked with leading a citizens', uh, committee to explore the opportunities at Lake Kennedy. I'm happy to see that on tonight's agenda, you're going to be asked to approve the plans as originally proposed. Uh, to give you a little color on what that means, I got a phone call at nine forty-five this morning from Mike El Chisholm. By ten fifteen, I was on the phone with the Executive Director of the APP, Association of Professional Pickleball Players. Uh, and by two o'clock, now he's right now in the middle of a tournament up at Punta Gorda. By two o'clock, he called, he texted me back and said, "Can I come up there today?" I said, "No, the council hasn't even voted on this yet." Uh, let them at least get the ink dry, hopefully, and we'll go from there. They have seven hundred and six players in their tournament this week. Their facility had to close registration three weeks ago, because they were already at their max. They have twelve courts. This idea of expanding to the full proposal that was presented two years ago is economically boom time for you guys. Uh, they could triple, almost triple, the size of that tournament. Uh, they want to talk. They've asked, uh, I've asked Mike El Chisholm to go with me on Saturday to meet with the Executive Director, uh, to talk about having their first tournament here in two thousand twenty-four. Now, I don't know if you can even get it built that quick, but it's a great discussion to have. Uh, this is going to be huge for the citizens of this community. We won't have to go to Brooks Field or Brooks Park over there, Page Field, all the time. Uh, that's where most everyone is on Saturday and Sunday mornings. Uh, and the revenue stream that this could produce for you guys, when you look at hotel stays, restaurant, uh, meals, uh, you know, it's crazy. The largest facility in the world is down in East Naples, sixty-three courts, biggest tournament in the world, US Open in Naples. Biggest tournament in the world, US Open in Naples. Hey, guys, you will be the second largest in Florida. That's saying something. There's a lot of big tournaments that are played here that get jammed up on the amount of players that they can accept. You open that door. So I just want you all to consider, when you're considering this issue tonight, a whole lot of good comes out of the 32 courts. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to on public input? Come on forward, ma'am.
My name is Helen Butcher and I'm from the Gator Circle area. All I can say is it's sheer terror, anxiety. Sometimes you just sit there trying to safely go out. People are laying on the horn. People are going 70 miles an hour down Del Prado. All you want to do is get home, go to the store and have a safe way of getting home and getting back to your neighborhood and coming home and coming back alive. That's always just something, please.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Panone. I also live in the Gator Circle area and I, a lot that I wanted to say has already been said. So I know you've heard enough of that. Someone pointed out, a young lady pointed out about the park. And now that she pointed that out, even though I'm really here for the traffic, in the park, which is really odd, is that the benches that were put in place, right there where the children's area is, the cage, the playground is at, they're facing the road. The benches are not facing the play area where the parents could actually sit and watch their children, make sure that they're fine. They're facing the road. It's making sense. So if that could be taken care of, that would be great. We appreciate it. On the traffic light, it's crazy, just simply crazy. And you've already heard all of that. A lot of people that are, have the concerns and the fear are working people. They were not being able to attend this meeting because it was held at 4:30 and not 5:00 or 6:00 or whatever to please them, to help them attend. So their voices aren't being heard and I think that's really a shame. Hopefully that maybe next time you can set it to more an hour where working-class people that live in that area, that have those concerns, that have children and wives and husbands that leave to go to work, they're working people that live in that area. So they're not able to voice their opinion or be heard, their voices aren't being heard. So I'm going to reach out to Wink News and see if we can organize some kind of a meeting where Wink News can cover that at the Gator Circle or wherever. So their voices can be heard and maybe we can set that up on a Saturday or Sunday because their voices need to be here, need to be heard. They're the ones that are, I'm retired, but I, there's so many children out there, so many parents that work. So, but thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. I will open up council discussion for citizens' input. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, to the gentleman who spoke about the UEP, please reach out to my office. I think we could have a conversation and I could share some things with you that'll help you understand what we're doing. Thank you. And about the intersection, the big topic of the night. First of all, I don't lie about traffic lights or anything else to my constituents. So I really don't appreciate that accusation. When it comes to passing along information, council doesn't construct traffic lights. Council doesn't even approve them, as far as I'm aware. So all we can do when we're asked questions about projects is go to staff, ask for information and pass it back along. We can also give our opinion to staff and tell them what we think, which I've been doing this whole time. So I'm not throwing staff under the bus, but the information that I've shared with you is the information I'm getting from staff and I trust them. Obviously, we were delayed on both of these lights for many reasons. I think one of the times that someone thought I gave them bad information, I was talking about Avril and not De Navara. So I apologize that I had my wires crossed. The idea of fronting the money is a great idea and I think that's something else that I talked about with staff a year or two ago. And so I wish we could have come to an answer sooner, but I do think this new solution will help a lot and bring accidents down hopefully to zero. We also dragged our feet, I think, on holding the developers accountable. I think we could have done more. So I apologize on the delay. Even if we could decide today, which we can't, to put a light in right now as a city, as you saw in the presentation, materials are taking a year. So even if we decided right now, it wouldn't be in the ground for a year. So we really do have our hands tied, but I appreciate, I appreciate everyone that came out tonight and I'm doing everything that I can to assist and I'm here to help. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess we'll start with that. I just wanted to express my gratitude for everyone coming out and voicing their opinion here. It helps us make decisions up here. It's unfortunate what took place recently and the timeline that it's taken to get to this point with regards to put in a light up there. I do think with regards to the, the year length, I mean, our hands are sort of tied on that. I don't think it's from a manufacturing standpoint with regards to the timeline more so than us actually, you know, getting out there and installing the equipment and the fixtures. But I guess I didn't have one until Councilmember Cosden just spoke. Part of the reason, or a significant part of the reason, not to cast blame, but it's just the facts, is that the delay is in a large part attributable to the fact, Mr. City Manager, this is sort of a question that I didn't pose as such, that the developer is having trouble figuring or gathering the funds in order to bring this project to fruition with regards to the light. Is that a fair assessment at the surface level?
That is my understanding, Councilmember. So as a condition of them receiving approval from the city to move forward with their development, since they were the ones that were causing the traffic conditions at that location, that's why the requirement was placed upon them to fund the full cost of that traffic signal. We do that all the time. Anybody comes in with a significant development proposal where our staff in reviewing the plans and the traffic counts, we'll come in and we'll identify traffic improvements that need to be done that wouldn't otherwise need to be done but for that development. And so rather than sticking our taxpayers with the cost of those improvements, we make development pay for that impact. Now, my understanding is that once the intersection reached the point where it satisfied all of the requirements associated, and there's, there's a long list. It's, you just can't go and put a stop sign somewhere or a traffic signal somewhere. There's a very detailed list of criteria that must be met. Once that intersection met that criteria, that information was conveyed to the development parties because there are multiple parties. It's not just Entrada Community Association. My understanding, there's about seven or nine other parties involved. And the issue there was amongst themselves. There was bickering, there was disagreement. And eventually, we got to the point, we've had numerous discussions in the city manager's office with our colleagues in the city attorney's office, that our options were essentially limited. We were basically going to be in a situation where we can sue them in court and that's a two-to-three-year process. Or we can continue to work with them and facilitate the process. They got to the point where they then moved forward with the design and did what they were supposed to with the design. Now they are where they are with actually moving forward with the construction. They've reached out to us for assistance, as Mr. Mason mentioned. The alternative is we can sit back and say, no, the city's not going to participate. You need to resolve your issues and we'll wait for you to do that. So we're not willing to do that. We have a mechanism now in place where we can recoup those costs in the future. Clearly Entrada has indicated to us that they recognize that it's a problem and they want to move forward as quickly as possible. So the delay that we're still experiencing, it's all related to the fact that everything has to be custom designed. Everything has to be custom-built and that's just the reality and those things take time.
Sure. Thank you for that clarification. And so where I was heading with this was, this isn't an issue that is isolated at this particular intersection. We've encountered different variations of this problem with regards to the developers gathering the funds to fund lights that have met warrants in different developments throughout the city. Is that fair to say over time?
So, Councilmember, to be honest with you, this is the only situation that I'm aware of since I've been here. Now, I've only been here two and a half years. There may have been examples in the past, but since I've been here, this is the only one that I know of where developer, we've had delays with the developer moving forward with their obligations.
Okay. I've heard over the years that that's, there's been disputes, but that might be different. I'm just saying there's always disputes about who's paying for it, right? So what, to finally bring this to a conclusion, I wouldn't be opposed to, and we won't do it here tonight, is if this is a problem in the future, that we would leave that as an open policy, that the city would do what we, in essence, are creating here and allowing that mechanism so that we're not in a situation like this in the future for any other intersection with regards to waiting in apparently four or five years for the developer to gather the funds. We would step in at the beginning of that four years. Because I 100% agree that that shouldn't be the city's burden to fund the light with taxpayer money for a private venture that has, like you said, but for them not being there, the traffic light wouldn't be warranted. So in the future, I think maybe it's something that we consider, that we put that in the planning phase of these developments, that we would do what, in essence, what we're doing here and front the money so that we can get that light there as soon as the development comes in and not four or five years later or however long it's been. That's not my district.
And typically, Councilmember, what many communities do, and maybe we do that here, I'm not sure, but they typically either will require the developer to post a performance bond or the developer is made clear that before any CO is issued, that those improvements must be installed.
And the improvements you're speaking on are the lights, for example? If warranted, if warranted or whatever.
Actually, they're all different, Councilmember, depending on the project. So this particular one, what we're dealing with here is just a traffic signal. So in many instances, let's say a developer comes in and they, you know, they have, they want to build 500 condos or apartments. So it may not be a traffic signal, but it may be a deceleration lane or it may be a median opening, a dedicated turn lane, sidewalks, streetlights. So it all depends on the project, but typically, again, the, you know, if, if that development is causing an impact, that development must pay the costs associated with that impact.
And you're saying in other cities, they do that at the onset? Or that you're saying we do that here, but somehow it wasn't missed?
So I'm saying my, my experience in other communities is that we do, well, we do both. So as part of the planning process, we identify the traffic-related improvements that must be done and we require that of the developer. Now, what I can't speak to is whether we have a performance bond or whether we have it set up where we will not issue a CO until those, those requirements are met. For some reason, this Entrada was a little different. Entrada was able to build out. Multiple COs were issued, so I don't know all of the details associated with that.
So in this instance, the ship has sailed, but what I'm getting at is moving forward, I would be in support of requiring at the onset that they fund this mechanism or create some sort of bond so that we don't have to wait several years in this instance to get that light that was obviously probably warranted many years prior. So not necessarily a fault on our end, but something that over time we've identified through this process as a potential issue in limited instances. The other issues I'll get through really quick, the gentleman with regards to the UEP. I believe he's in my district. I think we've met. I'd be happy to discuss that with you at any point in time, reach out to my office. And then lastly, the gentleman with regards to the agenda item tonight for the Lake Kennedy project. Unfortunately, if I'm understanding correctly, sir, it seems like you might be mistaken as to the scope of the agenda item here. We're not looking to expand those pickleball courts here this evening. That phase of that project isn't to be touched. It would be a separate issue entirely unrelated to touching that core component of the offerings under that facility. Because he said 16, we have 16 courts in Phase 1 and he mentioned 32, which is Phase 2 of the project.
I'm sorry, if I may help to clarify the situation. What we are proposing today is to build both phases. Both phases rather than Phase 1, 2. We believe it's much more economically feasible for the city to, essentially, we are paying $1.7 million to double the scope of the project since the contractor is already mobilized. We felt that the cost benefit was there rather than not moving forward with it at this time. Because basically, the first phase, which gets you half of the number of courts, is coming in at $9 million. And so you're able to double the size of the facility for basically an incremental cost of 1.7 million. So our, our recommendation to council is that you award the contract today, but you award it with both what's known as the base bid and the additive, which will give you the build-out of 32 pickleball courts and I believe 12 tennis courts.
It's news to me. So is that through a consent item possibly?
No, sir. We, it's actually under new business and we have a presentation for you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Welch.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to go back on what everyone's already said here a lot. I'm glad that we're using this mechanism to allow Entrada to put this light up sooner than later. So this is the step that we needed to take. We're here today to talk about it. We're here to do it. I'm glad that our city's traffic engineer has come up with a solution to stop that cross-traffic between the two streets, which is probably one of the biggest causes of the accidents. I know I've lived near Pine Island Road and Skyline my entire life and I know until they put the only one turn in and one turn out there, there is an accident there every week because people are trying to cut across the highway. So I do believe with making it one way in, one way out, people that don't want to go down and make the U-turn are going to find a different way to go. And I think this is going to solve a lot of our problems until that light gets in. And I am in favor for it. But what was brought up at the very end, which is something that's been on my mind and I don't know if I need to ask for a second on this, but with citizens' input being at the beginning of our meetings, I know on the county level, they keep citizens' input to the end of the meetings when you go to a county commission. And it's something that I've thought about and maybe we can bring back in a workshop later about the potential to move our citizens' input time to the end of the meetings. Because a lot of times people come in, and I've seen it over the past two years that I've been a council member, people will come in and they'll talk about an item that's further down on the agenda. They'll say their piece and they'll leave. And they don't get a chance to sit and listen to what the staff has presented or anything. They just want to tell you that your opinion had begun. And I think we have that now with emailing in anything you want. You know, all of the council members are going to hear your and read your opinion. So yeah, I don't know if this is the avenue to talk about that or where we could talk about that, but I would be in favor of moving citizens' input to after these items are spoken about in a timely manner because just of what I've seen over the past two years. So I don't know if there's, or what, maybe the city clerk can tell me how we would go about doing that if we wanted to make a move to change the way the agenda is.
So the agenda is ultimately approved by the mayor when it's created and then the city council adopts it as a whole at the meeting. If there's an interest to put citizens' input at the bottom of the meeting, certainly I'm at your direction. If you want to do a soft rollout and start it with a committee of the whole to see if it is accomplishing what you like, that is one thought. But I would be looking for council to just direct me on what to do.
Maybe we could put it as a topic at a COW meeting to discuss a little bit further, but just a thought.
Yeah, I think we can add it to a COW meeting. The only thing I would caution you, Ms. Councilmember Welch, is take a look at the agenda that we have today. You know, we have consent agenda items. So if we happen to move citizens' input to the back end of the meeting, then on consent agenda items, because we all know if it's a hearing item on one of the hearings that we have, the public has an opportunity at each one of those hearings to comment. But if we move the consent agenda, I'm sorry, if we move the citizens' input to the latter part, the community would never have the opportunity to weigh in on any of the consent agenda items. So that would be a little concerning for me personally, but I'm sure we could have a further discussion at a committee of the whole meeting where we can, you know, talk.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking, is to maybe have a discussion about it.
Okay, surely we can add that to a committee of the whole meeting. Real quickly, I'll just weigh in on the citizens' input aspect of the meeting up to this point. meeting, uh, up to this point. Um, you know, it's unfortunately that we find ourselves in this position with this particular traffic signal, but I think, uh, staff has identified a short-term and a long-term goal to correct that intersection. The short-term is putting up the, uh, the traffic devices to only make a left turn, uh, with the anticipation of the traffic signal. Now, what I will say is, just like we are doing in this circumstance, we're having a bond be issued, um, by the developer to make sure that we are paid back and reimbursed in a two-year period. We could also, and I think it would probably be best practices moving forward, when we find ourselves, uh, in these type of situations where they have, uh, a developer has to do right-away improvements, if it's, uh, traffic signals, whatever the case may be, uh, that particular developer, especially, of course, we don't have PDPs any longer, but a PUD, if we have those that come forward, I personally believe that we should be proactive and make the developer post a performance bond. So then, when that criteria is met, to when that traffic signal, or whatever the improvements need to be made, when the criteria has been met, then it's the developer's responsibility to perform the work. If we have a performance bond in place, uh, because it sounds like this criteria was met several years ago, but unfortunately, we find ourselves today with no traffic signal. If we had a performance bond in place, if the developer didn't do it four years ago, then we would be paid the performance bond, then we could put the traffic signal in, or whatever that improvement is. So for me, for, for future, I think the best practice is, is maybe to learn from this, and, uh, make the developer put the performance bond in for whatever scope of work may be, need to be installed at a later time, and we wouldn't find ourselves in this situation. Uh, real quickly, on the, additionally, on the traffic signals, you know, we had a meeting today of all the traffic signals that are damaged throughout the city and throughout our region as a result of Hurricane Ian, and it is pretty substantial, um, when we saw the numbers earlier today. So, not that that is an excuse for this situation, but looking forward, we know that we are going to have to deal with that when it comes to materials, ordering those lights that you heard typically takes a year's period, you know, so there's a lot more signals throughout this, uh, county that need to be replaced, so we have to keep that in mind. As far as the speed limit reduction that I heard a few people mention, and, uh, Mr. Ilches, maybe you can come up and, uh, just very briefly, uh, discuss the, uh, procedure when you want to change a speed limit, you have to do a traffic study, and he'll go into that, uh, you know, what, what needs to take place in order to do, uh, a, a speed limit change, you have to have a traffic study. And with, within that traffic study, uh, there, you could do that study, and actually you raised the speed limit. So maybe you could explain a little bit to, uh, you know, to the residents, how that process works.
Sure, uh, traffic engineering staff would go out and collect, uh, speed data, um, and then they put that into percentile, so, you know, if some cars are going thirty-five, some are going forty, forty-five, fifty, fifty-five, could be cars going, you know, at nighttime, somebody could be doing eighty there, that, that happens. Um, and so, the state statute prescribes a process, we look at the eighty-fifth percentile, and then we're allowed to go plus or minus, uh, I think it's seven or eight miles an hour from that, but you have to be within the range of that eighty-fifth percentile. So if it comes out and shows that eighty-five percent of the cars are on that road doing fifty-five, then you could, you could be at fifty, or you could be at sixty, you could be within five miles up or down. So if it ends up being sixty, then, in, in essence, the study could show that you actually need to raise that. Um, so studies, you know, we, the design of the road, uh, is set, uh, when the engineer's designing that, that's why there's the width of the roads, the, the size of the shoulders, um, so it was designed to accommodate the speed of the road that it is now. Uh, it definitely is an issue with, um, you know, the amount of movement through the intersection, which is why we're, we're putting that in place, and then certainly if, you know, that doesn't change the traffic crash, it should, you're now only going to have to deal with one movement, it eliminates a, a lot of movements through the intersection. Um, if the speed is an issue that needs to be looked at, traffic engineering will go out there, collect the data, analyze it, and then report out on, on what, what's available. Um, one thing though, council does have the ability, so in, in light of everything that's being discussed, um, council has the ability to, uh, set that, uh, speed limit outside of the traffic engineers and, and the studies in the state. Uh, we have one situation on Gleason Parkway, where the speed study showed that it should be, uh, raised basically from, I think it was, uh, forty miles an hour to forty-five, and council actually said, no, we want it set at thirty-five. So, between Skyline, I think it is, and Pelican, there's a small segment in there that's thirty-five, uh, council went against the speed study.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure the residents knew that. Uh, Councilmember Shepherd?
Uh, I don't want to repeat everything the mayor said, he basically said what I wanted to say, is that I hope we learn from this experience and implement some things so it don't happen again. I've been here a short time, and I didn't know about that situation, but I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with it. What I would also like to ask, is there a mechanism to let us know of other intersections in the city? Um, is there a trigger that tells us something has to be done, an amount of accidents, or things like that, where staff can let council know that, hey, we have an area that's developing a problem? Um, because our job as a council is to protect our citizens, and I would want to know if there are other dangerous places in the city, and not wait till citizens have to come forward.
So just a high-level answer to your question, council member, the answer is yes, there's a, uh, there are several criteria that is looked at by our traffic engineers, one of them is the number of, of accidents, the type of accidents, and unfortunately, they have to also take into account fatalities. Uh, those are some of the, um, criteria that I'm aware of, and, um, council member, um, the process that we utilize, certainly since I've been here, is once, um, staff notifies me that, um, the intersection, um, warrants, uh, a, a traffic signal, we put it as part of the budget process, and, uh, if you, um, recall, I believe for fiscal year twenty-three, you've actually approved, um, funding, um, to do intersection improvements associated with traffic signals at four intersections this year, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think three of the four are in, are north of Pine Island Road, um, and so that's the process that, that I'm aware of, that we've used since I've been here.
And, and if you recall, council member, during, um, our previous fiscal year, C-TAC, so whenever we do identify a signal that meets warrants, we have three others in the North Cape, uh, that we analyzed last year, um, that met warrants, and so those are now in the process for design, and then eventually will become signalized. Um, the issue about, you know, learning and, and putting in the PDP, we, this agreement, as the city manager described, is one that when we, when a development comes in, let's say for example, a Hudson Creek in the far north, uh, we look at the, the ultimate build-out of that, and where the traffic is going to come and go. So the traffic engineer for that development will tell us eighty percent is going to go out Burnsthor, twenty percent is going to come down Pine Island, or Chiquita, and based on those movements in and around a development, that's how we determine where any off-site improvements need to go. Uh, we have signals pending with Sandoval at State Road Seventy-Eight, uh, the signal at Twenty-Fourth and Seventy-Eight was attributed to, uh, the Liberty Park and that, uh, that development of those apartments. So this is something that we analyze every time a development comes through, and typically, the signal is not warranted when they come in for a permit, because the trips are not there, and if you put in an unwarranted signal, that drives bad behavior of the drivers. If you pull up to a red light, if you're a, a law-abiding citizen, you're going to wait for the queue. Some drivers are going to just run it, and then it creates bad behavior. So we want to time the signals or the stops when they're needed, so that we're not inadvertently creating bad behavior and people, uh, avoiding what we want the signal to command.
Thank you. I just wanted the citizens to know that, that our goal is for our city to be safe, and we don't intentionally, uh, create a situation like, like this one, and that, that's why I asked staff to explain them things. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings?
You guys kind of gone over everything, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you, any other comments regarding, uh, citizens' input? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine is business, nine A is consent agenda. I will open the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion, or provide a, uh, motion for approval, council member Hayden.
How about both?
Okay.
I will, uh, would like to pull, uh, two-twenty-three and ten-twenty-three.
Then?
And for the remaining, uh, items, I will make a motion to approve.
So you want to pull item, uh, ten-twenty-three?
Two-twenty-three and ten-twenty-three. It's four, it's four and five on the consent.
Okay. Is there any other, uh, council, uh, have any desire to pull any other items? If not, council member Hayden has pulled item four and item five, and made a motion to approve the remaining, uh, consent agenda items. Did I hear a second?
One second.
Okay. Any, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Benner?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item four is resolution two-dash-twenty-three, council member Hayden pulled that item, so council member Hayden, you have the floor.
Yeah, for both of these items, since they're related to, um, Hurricane Ian recovery, I had asked the city manager if you would, if you would offer a brief explanation of two-twenty-three and of, uh, ten-twenty-three, and what it means, what it means for our residents.
Uh, thank you, council member. If you recall, at your first city council meeting immediately following landfall of Hurricane Ian, you took numerous steps, um, to assist our residents and businesses, uh, recover and rebuild from whatever damage they may, they may have experienced during the hurricane. And so the first one was that, um, you implemented a waiver of emergency, uh, of fees associated with building permits necessarily, necessary to repair damage caused by the hurricane. So typically, uh, that deals with re-roof, um, some electrical repairs, um, enclosed, damaged enclosures, things of, of that nature, and so you wanted to help expedite the process for our homeowners to start rebuilding. Um, so now for about the last hundred days or so, um, we've been processing thousands and thousands of permits, um, we have not been charging fees for that, however, we have been incurring a significant amount of costs that, um, concerns us, namely, uh, over time, we've brought in additional private contractors to supplement city forces to help us with the, uh, huge workload, and so we're, we're concerned over the impact that that will have on the building services fund, um, uh, in the long term. But in addition, we have always, certainly since I've been here in the last year, council has made it clear that, um, we are striving for consistency, um, with Lee County in terms of practices and policies and so forth, and so Lee County, I believe earlier this month, uh, also, um, rescinded, uh, its waiver, and so again, to ensure that the playing field is, is equal across the building industry in, in the county, we feel that we should also follow suit, um, and, um, and reinstitute fees for, um, those types of, of, of work that I may have just mentioned.
Okay. Um, and then the second one was, uh, also related to Ian on the habitable structure.
It, it was, council member, so, I think city council recognized in the early days that there were, um, there was significant damage in, uh, certain parts of the city where people lost their homes. They lost their homes because of storm surge, and also because of wind damage, um, because of the housing crunch that exists in this area, um, before the hurricane, um, you know, rental apartments were, and rental homes were very difficult to find, um, we realized that our residents weren't going to have a place to go. And so council declared a, uh, an emergency and allowed those homeowners that, um, had their homes significantly damaged to have a trailer, but also to work with FEMA, and so when FEMA approved, approves, now we haven't seen any yet in the Cape, um, these disaster trailers, that they would, there would be a mechanism by which they could, um, have those trailers installed on their property, in their, in their driveway, so they would have a, a place to live. Subsequent to that, at the request of, of FEMA and also the state, they asked us to reinstate the permitting process, um, because they want to make sure that whenever trailers are installed, whether by them or an individual that is receiving emergency housing assistance from FEMA, that the, the local jurisdiction has inspected the installation of that trailer, and they want to ensure that the trailer is properly hooked up to electrical service and also to utility services. So they asked us to reinstate that, and to also, um, follow the policies that the city had enacted prior to landfall of the storm. So that's essentially what we're doing here. The other thing that we're doing is also, um, following the letter of the law, which is the Land Development Code, which states that in order for you to have a trailer in your driveway, um, that your home must have been declared uninhabitable by the building official. So what's not really designed for individuals to take a trailer that they may have, let's say, uh, stored previously at a storage facility, and then moved it into their, into their driveway?
So as long as that's been declared uninhabitable, you can still keep a trailer? We're extending the period, how long?
So my understanding is, under this ordinance, we are extending the period through March twenty-fourth of, of, I believe, next year, and that's because FEMA will provide, uh, up to a hundred and eighty days of assistance to individuals who, who need it, and there is the possibility of a further six-month extension, so that's why, for those affected homeowners, I believe the date is, uh, March twenty, uh, twenty-third to twenty-fourth of next year.
Okay, and the only difference now will be you will be required to have a permit based on proof.
Correct, we're reinstituting what was in place before the hurricane, and that is, you have to have a permit in order to have a, a, um, an RV or a mobile home in your driveway. Now, I understand that's either a three-day permit, a ten-day permit, or in this, in this situation, if your home, uh, was considered uninhabitable, the permit could be up to, um, the duration of, of this declaration.
Okay, and just so the public is aware, if we approve this, does that go into effect tomorrow?
So the effective date on the resolution, give me a, a second to verify that. So, the resolution says that it shall take effect, uh, immediately upon its adoption. So if you approve it today, beginning tomorrow, we will, we'll start, um, reinstituting the practices that we had before the storm.
Okay. Um, well, I will make a motion to approve, uh, resolution two-twenty-three and ten-twenty-three.
Second?
Okay, any other discussion on those two items? He made a, a, uh, motion to approve resolution two-dash-twenty-three and resolution ten-dash-twenty-three.
Was one the permitting for damage, or not?
Yes. The permitting for damage, uh...
I would like to speak on that.
Okay. All right, uh, well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, but before we call a roll call, go ahead, council member, Shepherd?
Um, I still, uh, I'm hearing from citizens that are still working on finding a contractor and getting permits for their roofs and things like that, so, I, I think we need to extend the, the length of time, uh, where they have to pay for the permit or not. Um, you know, there's a lot of people out there that still haven't got repairs done or even got a estimate.
Okay, council member Cummings?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that, because I believe that we were even talking about, I believe how we, uh, we were extending the FEMA, you know, a little longer, so I feel like we should stay up on side with them, since a lot of people haven't gotten contractors in to get already looked at, it's just not fair to the families that were hit by the hurricane, so I think we should keep the fees wait for a little longer.
Okay, um, Mr. City Manager, can you, uh, if I recall correctly in a conversation, something about FEMA requirement regarding permitting, um, if you could maybe mention that, uh, because I think that is what triggered, mainly triggered this, uh, to move forward quicker than, uh, the time period that we had put on the original resolution.
So that, uh, that, Mr. Mayor, applies to consent item number five, which is resolution ten-dash-twenty-three, um, so... ten dash twenty-three. So FEMA did make that request, again, that we reinstitute the permit requirement for travel trailers, mobile homes, and so forth, that are delivered and installed in somebody's driveway where somebody is residing in that, in that trailer because their home sustained damage.
Okay. And also, by understanding, the county has already instituted the permit fee back in place.
That is correct. I believe they did that on the third, January third.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you know the answer to this, or if Vince could come up. What is a current, or what was before we stopped roof permit? What was an average cost of that?
I believe is somewhere, well, this is a re-roof, so it was about seventy dollars? Eighty. I heard eighty. Mr. Mason said eighty dollars.
Eighty dollars for a re-roof permit. So I'm one of those people that have not filed for a permit to get a new roof, and I need a new roof. But at this point in time, I don't believe that eighty dollars, with the cost of the roofs going up, is going to make or break me getting a new roof or another resident. So I do believe that, as a city and as a taxpayer, we need to look into what we're spending. And for the city to be putting out all this extra money, to have all these employees here, and not being able to collect any money for it because we're saving a resident a sixty-dollar roof permit, I think we're doing the city a disservice by not collecting for it. So where I agree, we do need to help the residents out. I don't agree that we're doing it in the wrong way by starting to charge for these permits again. So my vote on that is going to be for.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, just add something to the comments from the, the council members. So because of the magnitude, the sheer number of inspections that we must undertake, you know that we brought in help from the private sector, and we have private companies performing many of these inspections. Well, it's costing us about two hundred dollars per re-roof to process. And again, right now, we're, we're currently not charging. And so there's only so much of that that we can do before we, we, before alarms start to, to ring and cause us some concern from the financial solvency of the building fund.
Which is why I'm for this resolution going forward and removing that. You know, even, even if it's just sixty dollars, that helps recoup that cost. It, it needs to be done. So I'm going to be voting for it. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussions? We don't have any other discussions. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings? Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, we will move on to item nine B, appointments to boards and committees. B1 is the Golf Course Advisory Board. We have five vacancies, and I believe that we have four individuals that have applied for those five particular vacancies. Madam City Clerk, if you could advise us as far as the terms of the appointments, I think that one thing that shows in our backup material, a majority of these positions always expire at the same time, basically. And like most of our other committees, we've tried to stagger those appointments. So with that being said, I think I, I would make a recommendation that on the positions that we have here, we have five vacancies, that three of the positions would be a two-year term, and two of the positions would be a one-year term. And the reason that I say that, because if you only have two openings coming up, it may be easier to fill those spots than, as a perfect example, tonight, we don't even have five applicants. So I think that a majority of our boards have a staggered type system, and I would suggest that this board kind of follow suit with those other ones. So that would be my recommendation moving forward. But we do have four candidates, I guess, and five positions. I, I guess we could have a discussion on the comment that I made, and also have a discussion whether we want to give each individual one minute, or because we only have four applicants for five spots, we just fill those positions. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, since I'm the liaison for this committee, it, it did bother me that all these vacancies were coming up at the, at the same time, since most of our committees are staggered. Anyway, I would like to go back to that process with this particular group. And if we look at three with two years and two with one year, I'm fine with that. We do have one member here, I think Mr. Crand had to leave. I'm personally good with the four that are on here. I've got my suggestion for who should take the two-year terms, but I can hold that for now until we hear from everybody else. But I've got Crand, Kenny, and Sodino as the two-year, Orsene as the one-year, and then whomever might fill that fifth spot is the one-year.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, to your light.
I did just want to ask one question regarding the two-year, one-year term. Council approved a resolution that has term limits for members. So the people that get the one-year appointment, would that be part of their term limit? That would be their one, their first term? Or do you want them to have a full two years before it's considered their first?
And how do we apply that a little to the rest of our boards? Is it just a two-year term?
Or some are three, but you're, you're considering changing the amount of years for this appointment for a one-year term? So that's why I had that question.
Okay.
Well, since we're going back to staggering these, these terms, and we're kind of, in essence, changing the whole thing, I think their terms should, should start over. This, to me, would be their first term, whether it's two or one year. And you said, in, with the other committees that may have a one-year term, is that considered a term? Or we've made it two years?
So this is the first time we've encountered this since the, the term limits has, has come up. When you have a new board, brand new, you stagger it at the very beginning. And I believe that the minimal count of one year wouldn't be considered in the count. But I would have to research that to confirm.
Okay. So the one-year terms, if, and again, if, when that term is up next year for these two people, whoever the second person was, then if they're reappointed to another one-year term, then that would, and once they're done with that, that would qualify as one term.
You could do that. That's a consideration.
Or the one-year would be a term, and if they do another year, that would be a term. And then that would be two terms in. Okay.
That's why I brought it up.
I'm, I'm actually good with that. And if, you know, if vacancies appear for, then appear on the two-year terms, you know, they, they could apply for that to get, to get the longer term as well, right?
So would the change be, moving forward, you either get a one-year term or a two-year?
Right.
Or is it to fix the stagger?
It's, we'll have three two-year terms, two one-year terms. Those would constitute a term and go towards their term limits.
Okay.
Okay? That, that's how I'm looking at it.
I think I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, to be fair to everyone who applied, that for the time being and for the sake of today, that we should go with what they applied for, which is a one-year term. And then we send it to the board to decide how they want to stagger this and bring this back as letting them apply for a two-year term, if they want to set up for a two-year term. But to just stick, stick someone who applied now for a one-year term into two years, we could be refilling that position in a year anyway. So knowing that we're doing this with most of our boards, I would rather put it back on the board to decide how they want to do it, how many people. And just tonight, go ahead, and personally, I would just approve the people that have signed up for one year. And it'll definitely give them something to do with their next meeting to discuss it amongst themselves, how they want to stagger it, and bring it back to us at a later date. So for me, my vote is going to be for what they all applied for, which is a one-year term. And I'm happy with the, the four that applied to do that. And then as, as part of their next meeting, they decide how they want to make it. So we're not going back and forth. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney?
So maybe I'm confused, but if your initial term is one year, and, and we're concerned about, well, does that mean that they're still going to be limited to two terms? Well, arguably, yes. It would mean they're, that's their first term. It's not part of a term. It's, in other words, they're not filling in for somebody else's two-year term that we appointed them to serve the last year because somebody resigned, for example. So I, I really think it's something that we would need to be clear about in terms of, I, I don't think there's anything that exempts a one-year term from being a term. Some boards, you know, you might only have a year term on the board, and, and you would have whatever term limits we had placed on that, whether it's two or anything else.
Madam City Clerk, do we have a ordinance in place for this particular board that outlines what the term limit is?
It's summarized, it's summarized on the backup, it's called a board sheet. It's the last piece. And it does say that they shall serve two-year terms. Now, just below that, it talks about the chair or vice chair being a one-year, but that's picked out of who's already seated. I think that might be what Councilmember Welsh, why he thinks
Right. Because I was a little confused when he said one year.
So it's normally two-year terms. And they're, these four individuals are up for reappointment, and we have a category with their term expiration dates.
Well, you know, for me, thinking about it now, we probably, we have an ordinance in place that says it's a two-year term. We can't prematurely just, I think today, just say, okay, we're going to do two and one. That's something we have to bring the ordinance back. It has to be voted on, has to be approved. Then we can make those changes. To do it now would probably be prematurely. So kind of thinking of this process, I think we just stay, stay the course, do the, the two-year terms now. Councilmember Hayden, if that's something that you want to bring back at a later time, make a change to that ordinance?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, the whole intention of this was to avoid replacing the board.
Right.
All at once. I don't think we ever want to be in that.
Exactly.
That situation. I certainly don't want to start setting a precedent, precedent where boards start deciding among themselves how long their terms are going to be. So we, we don't do that with any other boards. So, you know, we, we can take a look at it. We can go ahead and do this tonight, and at some point.
Maybe we can do something before we fill the other position.
Yeah. At some point this year, we'll, we'll, I'll look at it and bring back, you know, if I can get a second, we'll, I'll, I'll, I'll look at this, investigate it further, and bring it back for council for, for further discussion when we look at filling that fifth position.
Okay.
How's that?
I think we worked through that. So with that being said, then, would you like to change your motion?
I will make the motion that we select the four applicants to two-year terms.
And is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? We have Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I would, in making the change down the road, there will always be a year where, where a couple people or three people will, will break stride. If we always want to appoint for two years, there will be one year that someone serves a one-year term. Someone will have to serve a one-year term, or they'll have to serve a three-year term. But if you want to get it into a, into a staggered appointment, then one year will be different to, to transition you into that process.
Kind of very.
I would be, so I'd be in favor of moving forward, I'll be in favor of moving forward with, with the motion. I'll speak in favor of the motion. But we do need to realize as we make the change, there will be one year that's different from the rest, so that we can get into that staggered position.
And one thing that I would mention also, very similar to when we changed to odd to even years, as a council member, we weren't allowed to take a year away, but we were allowed to add. So maybe at some point.
Correct.
We identify, three of the positions will be at a later time, maybe a three-year term, and two of them are a two-year term. It'll take a little longer to get through that rotation, but eventually, we'll get to where we want to go.
Yeah.
And we haven't taken anything away from somewhere.
Right.
So just a few, for thought. Madam City Attorney, still see your light on there.
It's my understanding that originally, they were staggered terms. So I don't know what happened. To your point, for most of our boards, what we do is we say, let's say there's five members, we say two members will be appointed for a one-year term initially upon creation, and three members will be appointed for a two-year term. Let's say that. It could be two and three. And then once you've, and, and those initial members serve out those respective terms, and then they come due in either one year or two years, or two years and three years. And then from then on, you're not going to have everybody at one time, and you don't need to patch it along the way because they're expiring at different times. And then you would only be appointing a portion of the board every year, or every two years, or whatever it is. So I don't, I asked Kimberly if she knew how they got kind of out of sync.
I can check into that and bring that back to the council.
Because originally, it's my understanding, they were staggered, but I don't know.
Okay. I think it sounds like Councilmember Hayden's going to work on that and bring some more information back to us. Then we'll address it at that time. Any other discussion as far as the appointments? We got a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gun, Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Item B2 is an addendum that was added to the agenda. I added this item. I had received a email from the Metropolitan Planning Organization in reference to our representation on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Back, apparently in August of 2020, we had put this particular individual on, made a recommendation for them to be on the Citizens Advisory Board. Now, as a council, we make the recommendation, it goes to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and they vote on that individual. We just make the recommendation. I did receive a notice from the Metropolitan Planning Organization with their desire to remove this individual from the board for lack of participation. That time, I had asked for attendance records for this particular individual. And as you can see with the documentation that was provided, out of twenty-one meetings from August of 2020 to as recent as the May 5th, 2023 meeting, there was a total of twenty-one meetings, and this particular individual only was, had attended on six occasions. So the remainder of the time slot, Cape Coral did not have any representation on this particular board. Their bylaws at Metropolitan Planning Organization is, once you've missed three continuous meetings, that, that particular individual would be removed from the board. As of today, this individual has missed the last five meetings, with the last meeting of attendance was on May 5th, 2022. So I wanted to bring that information back to council, so we can make a determination. Again, we only make the recommendation, so, you know. So, you know, what we need to decide, I think, is if this individual is going to be removed, do we want to put this position out for advertisement to be filled? So that's why I brought the information forward. Councilmember Hayden.
Mayor, did anybody reach out to her? Was there any explanation given as to why she missed so many meetings? Has anybody even heard from her?
Yes, I did reach out to the individual. She also responded with a written email that stated that she had been busy in her schedule and her work, and that was the reasoning for missing a substantial amount of these meetings. She still had a desire to serve on the board, but that was the excuse that she, because of her, her schedule, she wasn't able to attend those meetings.
Yeah, I personally think that's way too many meetings to have missed based on that reason. If she would have been ill, health issues, whatever it might have been that caused her to miss those meetings. But for me, that's not a good enough reason to have that kind of a attendance record. So I don't know what the next step is. If we can make a motion to have her removed from this seat and start the process of taking applications to fill that seat. But I will do that. I will make the motion to, to remove her and begin the process of seeking applications and selecting a person that we will recommend to the MPO to fill that seat, correct? Because they have final.
Yeah, I think what we, your, your motion probably should be that we are making a recommendation to the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
To remove her, okay.
I would write the letter to them.
All right.
On behalf of city council, that our recommendation.
Is to.
Is to remove that individual. Because like I said, it is their, that particular board that actually appoints.
Okay.
We just make a recommendation. Typically, they follow suit of our.
Okay.
Recommendation, but that's how the process.
Well, that'll be the motion then, to recommend that she be, be removed from that position.
Okay, that's a motion. Do I have a second on?
Second.
Okay. All right. And I will open up for discussion. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. Should we include in our communication with the MPO that we, we don't want just to have them removed, but to have them removed and replaced? We certainly don't want to find ourselves without the opportunity to have someone there.
Yeah, I could put in a letter that we recommend a removal from the board and, and very near future, Cape Coral, City of Cape Coral will be making a recommendation for a replacement.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to item nine, see unfinished business. C one is follow-up items for council. We don't have anything listed. Any follow-up items for council? Seeing none, we will move on to item nine, D, new business. D one is Resolution 5-23 that Mr. City Manager had mentioned earlier regarding the construction of Lake Kennedy. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We placed this item under new business because we wanted to refresh everyone's memories to what this project actually entails. And so judging by some of the comments that, that we heard earlier, I, I don't think that, that we all remember what exactly was contemplated for this facility. So Mr. Klingon is just going to walk us through a real quick overview of what's being proposed here today, which is again, staff is recommending that you do the full build-out as a previous council adopted as part of the master plan for, for Lake Kennedy. So, Mr. Klingon?
Thank you. Paul Klingon, Director of Capital Improvements. I'm going to turn it over to James Pinkin. He's the Kimley Horn Project Manager for this. He'll give a small presentation. Will be available for any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, for the record, James Pinkin with Kimley Horn. Wanted to provide you kind of an overview summary of where we are with the bidding process and the bids that came in, what is the difference between the base bid and the bid additives, and what our recommendation is. In October, we received three valid bids. After the bids were reviewed and, and added up, we determined them all to be valid. Charles Perrion Partners, CPPI, was the recommended contractor based on their bid as well as local preference option. And the bids that we put out to the contractor community, as I said, were structured with a base bid and a base bid plus additive. Essentially, the base bid was the park as designed to match the budget that we anticipated at the time. The base bid with the additive included some additional courts and elements which really represented the future vision or the desire or the wish list of, of the park build-out. So that was the primary difference between those two. From a scoping standpoint with the base bid, this is an overview of it. You can see on the site plan that there's some courts that are grayed out. So those are the bid additives. But within the base bid, we had 16 pickleball courts, six tennis courts, court lighting as well as site lighting in the parking lot, sidewalks, et cetera. We had covered seating within the court areas, pro shop, concession, restroom, maintenance facility, 182 paved parking spaces, 91 overflow grass parking spaces, sidewalk connectivity throughout the park, and then stormwater facilities and site infrastructure. It's important to note that the stormwater and the site infrastructure was designed and permitted and included in the base bid to accommodate the full build-out of the project. From a bid additive standpoint, the items that you see here in red represent the items that were included in the bid additive. So that was another 16 pickleball courts, another six tennis courts, court lighting, covered seating, and then some minor sidewalk connections, as you see, kind of leading east-west throughout the park there. For the base bid, the numbers that we came, that came in were roughly $8.75 million. And then for the bid additive, it was another $1.95 million on top of that, which would bring the project total to $10.7 million roughly. It's our recommendation that the council considers the full park build-out. This would be the addition of the 16 additional pickleball courts, the six additional tennis courts, additional court lighting, covered seating, and sidewalk connections. Some of the benefits to doing the full build-out now, it's a relatively incremental cost difference to do the full build-out. Roughly for 20% more dollars, you get to double your courts, which means double your playing time and double the tournament capacity and a lot of benefits. You obviously achieve economies of scale in doing that. You eliminate future site interruptions. So in the future, you don't have to come back and shut down the site to build the additional courts. We know from doing the master plan and from the community input that there is the, the desire and the demand for the full build-out at this point. You're obviously using today's economic value of today's dollar. So you're minimizing cost escalation in the future. You're able to host larger tournaments, ultimately yielding a greater return on your investment, economic impact at restaurants, shops, hotels, as was mentioned earlier. So it'd be our recommendation, again, that the council considers approval of the bid additive to do the full park build-out with the additional courts. With that, we'll turn it over for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick thing, Mr. City Manager, and I know we haven't talked about this. The $11.2 million for this project, which, by the way, I do support doing the full build-out. But if you look back at the 2018 Parks Gobond, I believe we had budgeted about $5.5 million for this project. So my question to you is, since this project and cost has doubled, where is the funding mechanism in place in order to do this?
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the question. Just as a reminder, and certainly for the benefit of our new council members, a previous city council set aside, I want to say, Mark, is it 13, 15 million? I think we've set aside as a dedicated reserve specifically to address cost overruns as part of the Parks Geo Bond program.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, this is, I'm excited to see that we decided to go all in, at least on the pickleball courts. Mr. Bolter and I started a discussion on this maybe a year, year and a half ago. He took me to Naples to talk to a pro down there that's been involved with hosting events. And, you know, I, I think what this, what this brings is a lot of different elements. One, it increases the number of courts for our recreational players. We know they're in high demand. We don't have enough of them now despite the fact that we've built new courts at Geo Frida and, and other places. We know there's a demand for league play. But ultimately, what it brings is the ability to host major tournaments. Not the US Open, but other, but other major tournaments. And that brings revenue in for the city. It brings revenue in for the city. Over, over time, you know, I truly believe these courts will pay for themselves just because of the investment we're making and bringing in, bringing in tournament play. One of the questions I had, and we were having initial discussions about this, there was the 32 courts, but we also looked at the possibility of a, of a stadium court, where if you had the bigger tournaments in here, the featured matches, championship matches could be displayed on that one court. So my question is, not right now, but in the future, is there a way, and I know tennis will, tennis courts could become an issue for us depending on what we do with the yacht club. 12 courts are planned. Is there a way to move those courts, one section of those courts down and go to nine courts and look at the possibility of a, leave, leave three spaces open for now and look at the possibility of a stadium court in the future depending on what the interest is in tennis? Okay, does that, does that possibility exist? I don't know that it does. I'd at least like to take, take a look at that. Second of all, as we look at hosting bigger tournaments, how many parking spaces are going to be available there once the project is finished? Do we know?
So we've got, currently in the plan, we've got about 270 parking spaces, including paved as well as unpaved. I think that there's some expansion going by. That's Sun Splash. Okay. So right now, there's about 275 spaces.
Yeah, but you know, it could bring in discussions as we, as we talk about what we may do in terms of constructing a parking lot near there that could be auxiliary parking for, for the major tournaments. And then when all this started, we had talked about possibly a public-private partnership and putting a second floor on the pro shop. Because, you know, people, we know the players are going to be there all day. This gives them a place to kind of relax, hang out. Does the possibility exist anywhere on site that we could look at additional expansion of possibly a restaurant of some kind moving forward?
Sure, I think those possibilities are there. To touch on the, the stadium court, whether it's taking three of the existing courts and converting that, there's also some green space that is between the tennis and the pickleball courts. So you've got some space there that could be used for a stadium or restaurant or future development, I think.
So there, there could be the option to expand depending on how popular our area becomes for possibly hosting events.
Yeah, the other comment that I'd like to make, Councilmember, depending on what you do later on in the agenda with regard to the lease amendment with Sun Splash, I, I'm aware that their plans are eventually to perhaps utilize less of the existing surface parking lot that exists to the west. So that could open up the possibility of further expansion of, of the courts or, and so forth. That's something that we could look at in the future.
And what, what's our timeline from today to, to looking at having this park completed?
Let's see. Looking for notice to proceed in March in its 480-day construction time.
Okay, so.
Over a year.
Over a year, okay. All right. Well, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see it. I'm glad we're looking at all 32 courts. I know it's making Mr. Bolter happy a lot. He's been pacing most of it tonight, so I'm happy to see it. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address the, the P three possibility. Just as a reminder, council instructed us to not redesign the concession building because of the delays and costs. However, the, the opportunity is always there for someone to submit an unsolicited proposal for a public-private partnership.
Sure.
Councilmember Long?
I'm sure it was covered, but I might have missed it. The, you said previous council. Did the previous council direct you guys to make the change from phase one to phase two? Or is it, was that, when was that decision made?
So based on feedback that we had gotten from a previous city council because of our concern with cost escalation, we instituted a, a practice of phasing in the construction at pretty much most of the larger parks that had not been bid out. And so I'm talking about Crystal Lake, Tropicana, at the time, Yellow Fever Creek, Lake Mead, this particular facility. I think those are the main ones. Those are the ones that we knew that we were probably going to experience cost escalation with, which is why we set aside that separate fund. And so with all of those, we developed a development scenario that would allow us to buy the improvements based on our ability to, to fund them. So we all created a, a base bid that had a minimum number of amenities that still met the promises that we made to the community. And then while, and then also included buying in additional improvements. A festival park was the other one, Councilmember.
See, so, so thank you. So my recollection from that meeting, if we're talking about the same meeting, was that that more or less was a foregone conclusion that the entirety of that, that funding was going to go towards the escalations at Yacht Club, which are in excess of the 13 million that that fund has been set aside for.
No, sir. No, sir. So there's actually two different conversations that, that the council had. So one was restricting the funds that we had recouped over time from the, the previous hurricane, and that one escapes, escapes me.
Irma.
And then also, we had received reimbursement, I want to say about $2.7 million under CARES Act monies. We set aside both of those for cost escalation. Then there was a separate conversation that we had with council, and council gave us direction where Mr. Mason presented a financing strategy for the Yacht Club Community Park. This was pre, pre-hurricane. Mr. Mason also, and I believe council gave us the, the approval, he was advocating essentially returning $10.9 million that was set aside in Geo Bond money and making that also available for cost overruns because he had proposed a different funding scenario for, for the Yacht Club Community Park.
So just to be clear, so you're saying we've got two different accounts basically that are allocated towards overruns, the 10-point something million that you've just stated?
You have the 10.9 still with the yacht club. But since conditions have changed, I'm, I'm still looking at going to the fund that you set up independent of the yacht club conversation, but you still have that money also.
But that's separate from the 13 million that we're saying we've got here available? Okay, and is it fair to say that among all the gobond parks that, I would imagine all the bids currently are in excess of, or the overruns exceed the 13 million that we have set aside?
I can tell, I can't tell you the final cost because we haven't bid out the, the remaining of the, of, of the projects. But we knew that because of the cost escalation we were seeing in construction projects as a result of COVID, labor shortages, supply shortages, we knew that the budgets were going to come in above the estimates. So again, that's why we proactively requested council to dedicate those monies to the Parks Geo Bond because we recognize, and the council at the time recognized that we have to deliver on our commitment to our residents, which is, which is the, the parks and, and the park program.
The point I'm making is that 13 million that we're saying is sitting around for things such as this, this $2 million addition, could very well be eaten up in, in, in its entirety by the overruns that we apparently don't know yet for the existing gobond parks that we have yet to break ground on or in some cases even receive permits.
The parks that have yet to be put out for bid, those are the parks that involved a lot of vertical construction. And so we knew that all of the parks that we have in construction now, whether it's cultural or, or gator trails, those were basically horizontal projects. There weren't a whole lot of facilities, lighting. They weren't complicated. And so we knew, we recognized early on that once we. And so we knew, we recognized early on that once we start getting into the heart of the parks' geo-bond program with facilities like this and Festival Park and Yellow Fever Creek, we knew we were going to start seeing some significant cost escalation. And I think the problem has been exacerbated by the hurricane. We are seeing now cost escalation in excess of 70% on some of our non-parks-related projects. So this cost escalation is real, it's out there.
So just to paint a clearer picture for me and maybe some of the others on council, it was kind of sort of said in the presentation that this is only 2 million, but we have 13 million sitting around for overruns. That's already eaten up, we just don't know it yet from all these unfinished go-bond parks. So just bring it full circle, we're working on a phase two here on a project that hasn't started when we haven't even gotten close to finishing any of our phase ones for the go-bond. How many, how many go-bond parks have we completed from the first round? Completed?
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. I'll give you a presentation on that next one.
Looks like someone might have the answer.
I got it here, Cultural's gone out to bid Gator, GeoFrida, Del Prado, Sands, Cove Yellow, Yellow Fever, and Lake Kennedy.
The bid, how many have we completed? 100%?
Oh, completed Cultural.
Cultural's not finished? That's not 100%? The answer is Cultural's not completed. Go ahead.
Well, on the original, it was substantially complete. We're going to do some extra work there. So Cultural, Gator, GeoFrida are complete.
Okay, so about half.
And we're still within the contingencies on those.
So maybe half of the original?
So just to give you an idea, with the, with the sunshade structures in the parks I just mentioned down to Lake Kennedy, that total to date is 31 million, including those contingencies.
Which eats up that 13.
I, yeah, this is just what's been actually bid.
Correct, okay, I appreciate it, thank you. And then the, with regards to the phase two concept in general, I see that we're adding some additional parking to the bottom portion that in the original phase one is identified as optionable or optional paved, unpaved, which takes account in phase two. This might be a, a question for Mr. Cataro or someone in that department, but I would assume that because those are identified in the site plan, that those parking spaces meet the required parking calculations that we would require for that park?
Correct.
In their totality?
Yes.
We wouldn't be able to build it otherwise, I'm assuming.
I'm sorry?
We wouldn't be able to construct it otherwise.
And we worked actually with the city to work on those parking calculations and make sure that we're providing what is required.
So we've determined, which is why we're considering moving forward, that with the addition of the parking spaces on that site, it meets the demand that's required of the additional expansion.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
You know, we're going to need a motion on this. For me, Councilmember Hayden, just to elaborate a little bit on the suggestions that you made. I mean, for me, if we're going to move forward with phase two, if we're going to do that, we do that for the pickleball and the tennis courts. I understand it would be nice to have a stadium-type court for the pickleball, but to me, that would be a third phase later down the road that we would, we would address. But would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 523.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call a roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
No.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item 9E, personnel actions. We do not have any personnel actions listed. Petitions to council, we do not have any listed under 9F. 9G is follow-up binding for city management. G1 is Hurricane Ian recovery update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have your fire chief and emergency manager, Chief Lamb, come to the podium to give you this week's quick update. And then we'll also have Terry Schweitzer from Public Works and/or Mr. Ilchison give you an update on where we are with debris removal. And then if Mark Mason has any new developments, he'll give you a quick update on where we are with financial recovery. Thank you. Mr. Chief Lamb.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief. As was mentioned earlier by the member of the SBA, tomorrow is the last day for residents to apply, so get in that initial application for assistance from the federal government. Again, we are still running the DRC at the Lake Kennedy Center. It's still seeing a large throughput of individuals going through there. So if you'd been previously denied, again, that's an opportunity for individuals to go there to get additional assistance. So we're continuing to work on that. Not a whole lot to update. We are very busy working with Hagerty and our other folks about getting hazard mitigation grants and getting as much financial recovery as we can through the city. But right now, we'll turn it over to Terry to give you an update on where we're at with debris.
Mayor, Council, Terry Schweitzer, solid waste manager. Quick update, as it was announced this week, 21st of this month is the date. We ask everybody to have their debris outs. We can do a final assessment with our debris contractor for debris removal. As of the 28th is when they will be ceasing operations for street curbside collection. We will revert to full, full pre-storm solid waste collection after that date, which effectively will be January 30th. If residents still have debris that they'd like to take somewhere, they can use the Resource Recovery Facility on Buckingham Road in Fort Myers. That facility will take the CND and other debris. They also have horticulture. They will not take shingles at that facility. If folks have shingles, they can go to the Lee Henry, Lee Hendry Regional Solid Waste Facility. They could take CND there and they could take shingles there. Lee County has asked me to remind everybody, there is a debris drop-off site on Pine Island, but that is only for unincorporated residents on Pine Island and Mat Lachey. They've had to turn away a couple of Cape Coral residents. So Cape Coral residents cannot go there. As I stated, Waste Pro is returning to a full service on January 30th, which they basically have now, but it's all reverting into their hands. The Citizen Bulk Site will return to full service, the one up on, by the North Arrow Plant. They'll be taking everything again as they were, bulk, horticulture, and appliances. We are working on replacement totes. There are still a lot of requests coming in. It is a process with the supply chain and working with Waste Pro. As again, I'll just reiterate, there's an estimate of over 10,000 carts that need to be replaced, and manufacturers need to fit all those in along with all the other communities in Florida that were affected by the storm, along with the new startups and other things that they have to already have planned in their manufacturing process. So it will take time. The good news is residents can still put their debris out, their garbage out in their own containers or in garbage bags, including black bags. So they can use black bags for their regular garbage. Yay, we're back to that. So that's all good. As far as the debris sites go, so the Northwest Debris Site where we were using air curtain incinerator, we ceased using that before the holidays, and we're not going to be using that again. But they will be continuing to grind there as well as the other vegetation sites. Hallout is occurring at all sites. That's moving along well, anticipating that to be wrapped up hopefully in April at the latest because we will have some canal debris still coming in that will need to be ground. The Northeast Site, we, we had some recent issues there with grinding. I did talk to Seres. They are going to move their grinding operations to the center of that site. Spoke with the residents in the area, so everything seems to be okay there. Canal debris, right now, they're doing land-based removal in zones 2, 4, 8, 10, 11, and 12. And they are starting marine-based debris removal this week. And as well as that, I know there's been a lot of call for a tracker that folks can look at on the internet and our website. And I have worked with Tetra Tech from the beginning to get this set, and it looks like they're going to have something ready this week that we can put up. We actually looked at the test tracker today. The key, we had to work around with some privacy concerns because you could click on an individual point and it would bring up names and addresses and things. So we had to make sure we eliminated that. Couple other things working on miscellaneous-wise, the state is in town, and if you've driven by the Pine Island and the Lusa debris site up there that the state's using, there is a mound of vegetation debris that's growing and some CND as well. So they are working with the commercial properties. They're also working with gated communities. They're providing me a list updated daily on areas they're working, street names, things of that nature. They did, we are supplying them with a complete list of street names of all the HOAs, gated communities, private roads in the city, so that their liaison can start going door-to-door in some of these communities to make sure that they're getting their debris picked up. I would encourage, again, as we've stated and is on the website, private property, commercial businesses, industrial parks, apartments, condominiums, churches, mobile homes, et cetera, please talk to their insurance company about getting the debris removed. That's not part of the public debris removal process. And they can also visit the website. They can go to endebreecleanup.com. They can call FDEM's Hurricane Debris Cleanup Hotline at 850-961-2002. Or they can email endebreecleanup@em.myflorida.com. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you for the update. Just a few things. One, I'm, in just driving around, I still notice an awful lot of housing debris, construction debris, furniture debris out by the road in, in numbers of locations. And when I look at the map that, that we supply, the majority of it seems to show that we've only completed one pass in a, in a large geography of the city. And there's other areas that the second pass is in process. And so with the last date being the 21st, and the majority of the areas that I see on the map saying only one pass has been completed when we've told people there'll be two and three passes, I'm concerned about that and, you know, and, and when it ends. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is if the 21st is the, the deadline, then other than our website, how are we letting people know that, that everything has to be there by then? And I'm sure that the trucks aren't going to pick it all up on that day. And what's to stop people from continuing to take it out to the road after the 21st? And are we using any form of like public service announcement through the media to, to get this out to people rather than just coming to our website?
There was a public service announcement made through the Communications Department. As far as the websites, I would, I would pass that question if we've done anything more to that, that, that degree. I guess, Melissa, talk a little bit more about that.
Sorry. No, you're good. Melissa Mickey, Communications Manager for the City of Cape Coral. The Communications Department did send out a press release, I think it was Tuesday of this week. It might have actually gone out, was it Monday? It was Monday, sorry. So Monday of this week, we sent out the press release to local media. It actually was on several of the news outlets Monday evening and also Tuesday morning. So they'll keep, you know, pushing that information out for us. It's also on our social media avenues that we have. So it's on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and we've been sharing it out with the, we have several, is it, I don't know, 10 or 12 homeowners associations and neighborhood associations that we also push that information out to, as well as the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that they help us get out the message to, you know, the people that they have. We try to get it out as, in many, as many ways as possible so that we're reaching as many people in wherever they are. So that, whether it's via their email or, you know, social media, like I said. Trying to think, I know there was more. It is on the website. I think that's, that's probably it for now. We'll, we'll continue to send out reminder messaging up and through those days and through the end of the month. 311 is also aware, so we're putting it out that way, too.
And I'm sure it'll be on the local media. But to your point, council member, on the debris that's out, so the flooded areas down in, you know, along the river and those areas, they are running through all those streets again as part of this whole final process. The interactive map was updated yesterday to show what phase we are in. And we're out there, part of the monitoring firm, Tetra Tech, is they also go out and make sure that all the streets that need to be covered are covered. There is some debris out there, I will say, you know, as I've, I've driven around, some mixed, some other issues. Those go on a punch list, and those get sent to the contractor to follow up on and make sure those are, are done as well. And again, we continually encourage folks to use 311 to get those, those requests in. So that's where we're at on that.
Hey, council member, and your, your last part of your question was, what would prevent somebody from setting something out after, after the date? And the answer to that is nothing, and we don't want to prevent anybody. The only change for the resident or the business will be they're going to have to revert to the pre-hurricane set-out ordinance, which means if they put out vegetation rather than it just be a free-form pile, it's going to have to be bundled, tied, palm fronds stacked. If it's bulk, it's got to be set out. In bulk, solid waste will be in bags. So you can still set out stuff, but now it's going to have to follow the regulations that were imposed prior to the storm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, is Mr. Mason want to be discussing?
Just a real quick update. Last time I spoke with you, we were waiting for approval from FEMA for our fourth expedited project worksheet. They approved it today. I signed off on it as the applicant, and so now it's going to wind its way through the state until we are notified that it's been obligated, and then we'll draw down the, the $5 million or thereabouts. We've also submitted two additional project worksheets, one for canals, one for the second tranche of the debris cleanup. We've also, let's see, we finally received an invoice from Seres, which is about $14 million thereabouts, and we've also received their first invoice from Tetra Tech, which is a little over $1 million. So we'll be processing those when they're cleaned up by the, by the contractors, probably within the next couple of weeks. And most of you are aware that the, the Florida Legislature met in special session last month. They, the governor signed into law something called Senate Bill Number Four, also known as SB4. Part of SB4 had a section in there that they appropriated $300 million from the general fund in order to provide, let's see, to essentially cover the 12.5% associated with the local government's 12.5%. And so it's on a first-come, first-served. We'll be entering into an agreement with them. They're in the process of developing the agreement. And so when that occurs, we'll also be required to put aside $1 for every $1 we receive. We'll have to put aside $1 for mitigation as well as, for mitigation or, or, or recovery. So even though we're not expending the funds for our project worksheets, we will be required to utilize it for either recovery or mitigation. So we get to the point, we have better idea of what the, what the agreements will look like, we'll have another conversation about this to explain it further. But it's important to understand that the state, that this is the first time this has ever happened, never seen anything like this before, where they're stepping in to do something like this, but they're also causing the, the local governments. So basically, you're stretching your dollar here. They're covering it, we're required to use it for something else. And we could talk about the mitigation, and we will be talking about the mitigation at the, at the, at the winter retreat as well. So other than that, it's just business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So we've got, are there any, any questions?
Any questions for any of the staff? Seeing none, thank, thank you for the update. Next item on the agenda, G2 follow-up items or permitting process update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt Grambo will give you the latest update on where we are with our business process improvements in Building Services Division. And a lot of those improvements are also related to Hurricane Ian. Mr. Grambo?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Grambo, Special Products Coordinator in the City Manager's Office. Jumping right into the EnerGov side of things this evening, we're continuing to experience some really good efficiencies with our 12 push-button permits, particularly the roof repair and roof replacement push-button permits that we launched on December 12th. Since the launch of those three different permit types, we've processed 3,406 roofing permits. Those permits are issued immediately through EnerGov CSS with zero-day turnaround time, allowing our contractors and homeowners to get right to work on replacing or repairing the roofs. Additionally, in EnerGov, we've been doing some reconfigurations on two different portions, on the Notice of Commencement portion of the review. For the push-button permits, the Notice of Commencements were initially reviewed right at the beginning after the permit was issued. at the beginning, after the permit was issued. We're shifting that later in the process so that our contractors can schedule inspections a little bit more quickly and get into the queue for inspections nearly immediately after the permit is issued. Additionally, we're working on improving both the licensing and some issues with the permit hold settings in EnerGov to prevent some of the confusion that the hold alert is doing for our contractors, particularly the flood zone hold alert. In EnerGov, when a project is located in a flood zone, there's an alert that in the system is known as a hold, but it's not a hard hold. It doesn't prevent any issue, it doesn't prevent any review of the permit application. So what we're doing is, we're going to be adjusting that to make it a little bit less confusing for our contractors. We've been getting a lot of calls and correspondence regarding, I have a hold on my permit, but in reality, it's just an alert related to the flood zone location of the property. So we're addressing that this week. Additionally, we made some improvements to our licensing holds. For any license that has close to expired or expired insurance information, we're not, we're no longer doing a hard hold for that type of information. We're only doing hard holds, holds that prevent any progress in the EnerGov system, only to state license expirations. So that should avoid a lot of the headache that some of our contractors have had, especially with the contractors that have several different types of license, insurance requirements for their license, where sometimes they renew three different policies over a two-week period, and the system automatically puts their license on hold several times, two, three times in a month. So we're avoiding that issue, adjusting that in the system, and it should create for a lot less headaches on the contractor's side of things with the licensing. The major changes that we're doing at the beginning of this year, we talked about it at a previous meeting, we've adjusted the permitting counter hours back to the pre-hurricane Ian hours. So Monday through Thursday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and closed on Fridays. Last week was the first week of the new hours, and on the Friday, we had a 62% increase in the number of issued permits that day as compared to previous Fridays. So we're immediately seeing some efficiencies with allowing our staff additional time to work in back office rather than at the permitting counter, to make sure that our permits are getting through and reviewed and issued back to our customers. Some additional changes that are going to be occurring at the permitting counter starting next week on Tuesday are that our permit technicians, the individuals, the staff members that are at the front counter, will be continuing to accept application documents. However, they will not be immediately issuing some types of permits. All the permits will be processed and issued through the EnerGov portal. Though the permits won't be issued immediately at the counter, the push-button permits, which is most of the permit types that are, that would be issued at the counter immediately, will still be issued immediately through the EnerGov portal for any permits that are applied for that are the 12 different types of push-button permits. Now, why are we doing these changes, this second set of changes starting next week? To continue to improve our permit process efficiency, allowing additional staff hours to the back-office processing of many different types of permits, especially the more complicated types of permits that cannot be applied for through the push-button process. Also, to reduce the counter wait times to get through additional individuals in a more expeditious fashion, rather than having very extended appointment times at the front counter where you're going through five, 10 different permits. And then also, we're really trying to promote the use of the permitting portal for a couple different reasons. Primarily, because we want to encourage people to use the push-button permit system. A lot of the contractors that are coming to the permitting counter are applying for roof replacements, which can be issued immediately through EnerGov CSS. Not having to have people show up to City Hall, sometimes before City Hall opens, wait in line, wait for their turn at the counter, and then just to have it be a push-button permit that they could have issued immediately at their office within, you know, five to 10 minutes under the new system. So really trying to encourage that, reduce the counter wait times, and improve overall efficiency. That's, those are really what our big goals are with the permitting counter. I really want to note tonight that the permit and inspection status information, that's about 90% of the inquiries that our staff members are calling or emailing to the city about, all that information is public information. It's available on the portal at www.capecoral.gov/energov. Contractors who are registered in the system receive this information on their dashboard, but also any homeowners or any other interested parties can go to the website, capecoral.gov/energov, and go to the search function, and they can search by the permit number or the property address. And it shows the status of their permit, whether it's in review, issued, resubmit required. And same thing with inspections. It shows whether an inspection was passed or failed, and includes the inspection comments so that they know if there's any issues with their inspection. So everyone is operating on the same page. All the information is available publicly. It's relatively straightforward to access that information. We have a training video on capecoral.gov on how to access the information through the portal. And so we're really trying to encourage our contractors, homeowners, or any other interested parties looking for permit status or inspection status to please check the web portal first prior to contacting the city via the phone or email. Moving on to inspections, as I mentioned in my previous update, our current situation for inspections, particularly roofing inspections, is quite substantial. We've issued about 13,000 roofing permits, and we are still expecting probably over 50,000 required roofing inspections due to Hurricane Ian damage. Immediately after Hurricane Ian, when we were in the EOC on generator power, emergency internet supply, the city submitted three different mutual aid or resource requests for building inspection services. These requests were substantially not filled, other than a municipality on the East Coast that was able to assist us in a very limited fashion, and most of those resource requests, mutual aid requests, were denied due to inspector availability. Our existing building inspectors are continuing to conduct about 23 to 30 inspections per day, which is higher than the ISO standard, and the city's averaging about 600 inspections per day. Since the 5th of December, which is when all of our private provider inspections began, our four private provider inspection providers in December completed about 2,327 inspections. That's about 15.7% of all of the inspections that were conducted during that same period of time. We're continuing to search and to work with any potential private inspection provider to increase the city's capacity to get on these roofing inspections, particularly the dry-in inspections, that we're receiving a lot of requests for dry-in inspections now that permits have been issued quickly and that work is completed, to ensure that there's not very, very extended wait times for that first roofing inspection. However, contractors and homeowners do have several options to bypass the longer wait period for these types of inspections. They, under state law, can elect to utilize a private provider. Either the contractor or homeowner, per Florida statutes 553.791, can elect in writing to the building department at least two business days prior to the first scheduled inspection to utilize a private provider. They also can use an engineer's letter to pass a specific inspection. And we are also offering, through one of our four private providers, a virtual inspection service that allows for a contractor's staff member to be onsite and to complete a virtual inspection using a mobile phone app. So what are we doing to address the volume and the wait time, particularly for the dry-in inspections? First and foremost, we're working to hire additional inspectors. We have three current openings for building inspectors. However, it's a very, very hot market in the state of Florida after the hurricane season that we just had for these positions. There's about 150 open inspector positions in the state. We're really being very diligent in evaluating every single option that we have to remain competitive in the market, ensuring that we can offer something that building inspectors are very interested in setting up for, to become a full-time building inspector for the city. Building inspectors, as many of us know, are actually very, very specialized positions, requiring typically four years of contractor experience, an internship, 120-hour state exam that they have to, a course that they have to go through, and a closed-book exam that they need a passing grade on. So it's a very specialized position, and the market's very hot, but we are evaluating all of our options to ensure that we're able to attract additional inspectors as soon as possible. As I mentioned previously, we're also offering the virtual inspections through the innovative inspections private provider. They are able to do more inspections than they're currently doing for the city. However, we do need the contractors to contribute a staff member to be onsite during the virtual inspection so that they can take the imagery for the virtual inspection to be passed. And then finally, and most importantly, we are really pushing to find some additional private providers. We're actively this week and over the last few weeks, working on contacting any potential private inspection provider so that they can begin inspections as soon as possible. Four additional private providers were contacted this week. Their response to the city is due by next Tuesday. And we are also requesting that, instead of requesting a certain number of inspectors, we're requesting the maximum amount of inspection time and inspection resources that each private provider can provide the city as soon as possible, as well as some more comprehensive private providers that do both plans review and inspection services. So there's some that just do the inspection, some that do more of a turnkey. We're contacting both and looking for any potential inspection resource to reduce the wait time for a city inspection, because we know and understand and are corresponding with citizens as well as contractors who really want to get their dry-in inspection completed to move on to the final inspection and have their full roof on their house. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, you mentioned that sometimes you've had situations where somebody comes in for a roofing permit, sits down for an hour or two, realizes they could have done it online. Can we possibly put a sign, a couple signs up so, to let people know of the different push-button availability for different permits, so we don't have these people being irate when they finally get called to the counter and find out they didn't have to sit there?
Absolutely, councilmember. And we've done that, and we've even gone as far as setting up a private workstation. So when someone comes in to drop off a permit, we give them the ability, they can go into a cubicle and do it online themselves, right there, right on the spot. We have a scanner, we have a computer terminal. And we also, and we promote this, there are posters in the building department, you can even apply for a permit and process the permit just by scanning a QR code.
Great, thank you.
And to add to what the city manager was saying, we also have the, we rededicated the message board at the front door of City Hall, put it over by the permitting counter, has a list of all the push-button permits. The push-button permit information is also outside on the display over on Cultural Park. And there are, I believe there are posted signs with all 12 types of push-button permits that are at the counters themselves, and they've been up there for a few weeks. Before we implemented this change, we wanted to have that information available to our more frequent flyers at the permitting counter so that they're aware.
And of course, we work very closely with LEBIA and CCCIA, and to ensure that they help get the word out to all of their members and the industry.
And additionally, we utilized EnerGov and every registered contractor in the system and sent out an email with all this information as well. So even folks that may not be coming to the permitting counter more regularly, if they're registered with the city and licensed with the city, they received an email directly.
Councilmember Wolf.
Thank you. I love the fact that we have a URL that's a lot easier for people to type in. But with typing that in and going through, it still seems that there could be, maybe we could put a button on that permitting page that links people directly to that. Because as I look at it and I go into permitting on the website just now, it doesn't show me where to, click here for search. So maybe just putting another link or another button that says, want to search for a permit, click here, and it automatically jumps people to that. So it could just be a simple step of adding one button on our website that's going to eliminate people from having to call and say, hey, I can't find where I'm supposed to look up if my contractor even filed for the permit yet. Because I can tell you, through this process, there's a lot of contractors out there that are using the city as a scapegoat, saying, oh, I'm not getting a permit from the city. And then when I follow up with these residents that are hearing this from this contractor, and I find out that no one's even applied yet, then they go back to their contractor and say, well, haven't you applied? So having that easier for the citizens to look up, I think is going to be good. So maybe just adding that as a, like a quick button on the website. Other than that, I think it's great that we have the tiny URL on the end there and continue on with the good work. Thank you.
Councilmember Steineke.
Where would a, thank you. Where would a citizen go for a list of vetted private providers, should they want to take that on themselves with their contractor?
It would probably be a good idea for us to generate a list. I'm not sure exactly how we could present that information. There may be a possibility for us to put that on our website and to have an easy link where our residents and contractors can access this information, but I'll look into that and work towards having easily sorts of information so that they can access it.
Vince Cotero, we have a list because all of the private providers that perform services in the city have to register with us. But I do have a concern about how we would present that information. It could look like we're proposing certain firms be hired, and some of these work for us. So it could look like a conflict of interest. I just want to be very careful about how we present that information to the public.
Well, let's do it in a way that we can be careful and not take any liability that we should take, but we also, as a resource, for those people that feel the need to help themselves, that there's a place that they can go since private provider is an option, we certainly ought to be able to assist our citizens in taking on that responsibility themselves if they choose to.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for the update. Appreciate it. Okay, I think before we move on to Item 10, ordinances and resolutions, we will take a recess until 7:30. take a recess until 7:30. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Item 10 is ordinances and resolutions. Item 10A is public hearings. Ordinance 89-22, Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the second and final public hearing.
Ordinance 89-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral land development code by amending Article 4, zoning districts, Table 4.1.6, use table, regarding mobile food vendors and mobile food courts as conditional uses in the P, C, I, I N S T, N C, C C, M X B, M X seven, and S Z, S C zoning districts. Amending Article 4, zoning districts, Chapter 2, specific regulations by district, Section 4.2.6, 4.2.7, 4.2.8, 4.2.9, 4.211, 4.212, 4.213, 4.214, and 4.215, regarding mobile food vendors and mobile food courts, and to make zoning district text regulations consistent with the zoning use table. Amending Article 5, development standards, Chapter 11, conditional uses, to create Section 5.11.13, mobile food vendors, regarding the establishment of zoning regulations for mobile food vendors, creating Section 5.11.14, mobile food courts, regarding the establishment of zoning regulations for mobile food courts, and by amending Article 11, definitions, Chapter 1, general provisions, Section 11.2, definitions, regarding mobile food vendors and mobile food courts, providing severability at an effective date. The second public hearing will be January 25, 2023.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to staff, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, staff requests the ability to provide you the presentation at the second public hearing, since we've already discussed this several times at a Cal session, so in order to speed up today's meeting, we're going to request that we forego the presentation unless council requests it or a member of the public, and that we'll go through the presentation at the second public hearing.
Okay, I'll now open a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 89-22? Please come forward.
This is Mayor, Members of Council, for the record, my name is Gary Abishan, and I just wanted to come forward and support the ordinance. I think council has done an excellent job, particularly of the length of the court. And this is an important piece of the legislation that comes before you, and there is no way to address food courts in our current, in our, in our current code, and so I would highly encourage your favorable review of this ordinance and stand to answer any questions at any time between now and the final hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again. I don't know if I said it before, my name's Gabriel Denny, sorry if I missed that one. One of the few pleasures I have, well, I have several, but like, one of my guilty pleasures is going to Lowe's and hitting one of those brats when I'm done, right? You guys know what I'm talking about? Like outside of Home Depot too, they got that cart where you can get like, you know, it's like five, seven bucks, I think, with the peppers, it's, it's great. Like, I, I know I've got to do more work, I'm in scrubby clothes and all that, and it's just a brat, it's just good, right? As I read the text of the draft of this bill, or ordinance, excuse me if I'm using the wrong word, the food court thing sounds great, I think that's, that's appropriate, totally on board, but what does that happen to my ability to get a brat outside of Home Depot? Because that cart, like, I think the one outside of Lowe's is probably good, I think they're going to move that one inside, so technically it moves, but that big old one that they got outside of Home Depot, this ordinance has its stance, apparently they have to truck it away every time? So that's, I mean, that's absurd. Why is it of interest to the city or the government whether or not commerce works? Guess what? If somebody has a food, a mobile food truck, food cart, whatever we want to call it, and they're able to sell, and it makes money, guess what, that's the public voting, that's the public saying, you know what, we like this thing and we want more of it. If people don't go to their location spot wherever they're at, well then the public, guess what, they're not going to be able to exist anymore. As I understand it, the city has ordinances on abandoned vehicles, in the horrible case of somebody spending the $20,000 to $50,000 to start a food cart, and then it fails so miserably that they leave it in place, we, we can handle that as a city, I believe. So, so why do we need to regulate this further? Why do we need to demand that, hey, outside of Home Depot, you've got that brat cart, but since it's got wheels on it, you got to move it? That, that seems absurd. As far as mobile food court, like food courts, like setting up like a, a place where like four or five can congregate, yeah, that sounds great, looks good in the bill, but because you've tied this into the fact that if I happen to have a business and maybe I lease a spot, like in a parking lot, from like a Dollar General, for example, I have to now tow it at home? I mean, that's absurd. What, what harm does it do if it's in otherwise good working order? And so I just asked that the council maybe rethink about the language of this bill, and really the full impacts this has on small business, right? Because that's what you're chasing away. Renting, starting an actual restaurant is something I want to do. It's going to cost me $300,000 to start, which is why I haven't started it yet, all right? Now, if I were to do it in a mobile food court, I might, a mobile food vehicle, whatever, it'll cost me more towards $75,000. There's all sorts of goofy regs that you have to deal with in the state of Florida, but now you're telling me that once I get to that point, I have to move it if I lease a spot? Hey, come on, why are we making it harder to start businesses? That, that's ridiculous, let's not add more barriers. Let's stop telling people they have to go to the city for permission for something that the public can readily vote with their dollars on. That's all I have to say, I appreciate you all's time, have a good night. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, how are you tonight? So my name is Kathy Stout, and I am here to talk about this ordinance. There's a couple of things I need to point out. As we all remembered, after Hurricane Ian, we had the generosity of multiple, multiple food mobiles who gave us free food. Some of them even converted into putting their laundry service and giving free laundry. If you didn't recall that, it's, it's, it happened, okay? So I'm talking about a couple of different things. Small businesses, yes, we can't chase them away, that's something I support. I'm a member of this community and a very big member of small business organizations through Cape Coral, and I just want you to realize that if you put in such a strict ordinance, not only are you going to chase away the small business owners, but you're going to chase away your, your community too, and I think that's something that you really should really think about. Speaking of which, something I'm actually going to start soon, myself, I'm actually going to do a mobile food court myself. Something that I want to bring to our community, and I have a lot of different ideas that is going to enhance our community, not take away. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Again, this is a, we need a second and final hearing on this particular topic, but, and the final public hearing will be held on January 25, 2023, but I will open the floor for any council discussion pertaining to the comments that were made here tonight. Councilmember Cummings.
Yes, as a small business owner, I totally understand on how you guys feel. I do like the mobile food trucks, they are convenient. I know when I go to Home Depot, that's the first thing my children do, is they run and get their brat. We look forward to that, actually, it's convenient. Mobile food trucks has gotten to be pretty big. I look at, small businesses are the heart of the nation, and we got hit pretty hard in 2020 with the pandemic, and businesses had to work hard and get creative to come back. A lot of restaurants went out of business, and they had to figure out what their SBAs or their PPPs that they got, and they didn't get that much money back. How can I get my business back without coming up with another quarter of a million dollars? So a lot of them got creative and they became mobile. Food carts, mobile food trucks, is very popular, as you can see. As you had mentioned, we had a massive hurricane, and it was historic. The next day, those food trucks were out there for each and every one of us residents, giving us free food. They did that for quite some time, and I don't feel like the way we thank them is telling them now we're going to put restrictions on you. I feel like right now we have other things we need to focus in on versus our mobile food trucks. That's how I feel, thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. I'm going to just touch on, because, because we had people here today. The, the first word of this is mobile. So to, to, to say that you go to Home Depot and you're going to miss getting your brat from the mobile food truck, I can tell you that I look forward, when I go to Sam's, getting that $1.99 hot dog at the end, and they've put that commissary on the inside of the building. So if, if the point of going to Home Depot is for a brat, then I believe they will find a way to put that commissary on the inside of the building and, and regulate it. So to say that we're hurting mobile food vendors, I believe the word in the front that we're looking at is mobile. So when this comes forward, I'm going to be supporting it the way that it's written because I think we have some bad actors in the city that have turned what's supposed to be movable into something that's permanent, and we saw that when the hurricane came, they didn't even move their trailers, they just just took everything out of it and left. So I'm in support of this now, I'm in support of it again on the 25th. Thank you.
Any other comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, we, and just a, a reminder for that particular ordinance, the second and final public hearing on ordinance 89-22 will be held on January 25, 2023. We'll move on to ordinance 103-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 103-22, an ordinance amending the lease agreement between the City of Cape Coral and PPW Cape Coral LLC for the lease of property owned by the City of Cape Coral at 400 Santa Barbara Boulevard, known as Sunsplash Water Park, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the First Amendment, providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, I will turn it over to Mr. City Manager first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assistant City Manager Connie Barron will walk you through the presentation and introduce her guest.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Connie Barron, Assistant City Manager. This ordinance is a follow-up on a discussion that we had at the October 19 Committee of the Hall meeting. Mr. Kurt Cafrey was here with Pro Parks, and we discussed a possible modification to our lease agreement with them to provide the opportunity to construct a wave pool at Sunsplash Water Park. In addition, the city would in turn construct a parking lot. We'd like to go through the presentation very quickly and answer any questions that you have, and I'll let Mr. Cafrey start first.
Thank you all. It's great to be with you again, and what an exciting time it is in the city. You've been through quite a bit, and to watch you all manage the evening with such grace has been kind of fun to watch, but it's really just meant as a compliment. You guys are doing a great job. I, we, I have done this presentation for you once before, so I won't go deep in the weeds here, but what the, the point I wanted to make was we had a, this was our first year with, with the, the attraction, and we signed a long-term lease with you, and we're excited about it. And as a result of our first year, it got a little windy in September, so we didn't get to finish the way we thought we would. But prior to that, we had a really strong operating season. We did the things we thought we could do, using our expertise. As you guys know, we operate multiple water parks around the nation and other attractions, and so we've applied our sound strategies that have worked for us for decades, and we, we saw the great results happen here. We're happy with things the way they are. They're, they're going great. But one of our initiatives was to try and find a way to serve our customers and the community, not only in Cape Coral, but the surrounding community that travels here. Similar to the discussion you had earlier on, people traveling here for pickleball. We think that the amenities that were at the park were a great basis and a great start. We do believe a wave pool would be a great enhancement. It's the single largest identifier of the, the term water park, and it's, it's missing. And so we'd like to add that. That being said, it is a $3 million investment, and we are at about peak parking right now. So without an expanded parking lot, we really can't make that happen. We don't lease the parking lot, we use the parking lot. It's not part of our leased area. And so that would be one of those things where we'd need some help with additional parking. That's what we discussed last time. I also shared with you a graphic. We've shared some time with the city and gone deeper into some of our designs, so they've, various folks in the building department have already seen some of our drawings and helped give us good guidance on how to get this accomplished. We have missed the ability to do it in front of this operating season because we just don't have the time to construct it between now and our opening date, which is March 11th, by the way, two months away, so right around the corner. We're excited about it. It's going to be the best season ever. So I, you know, I, our, our hope is that we can find a way to make this amendment work. We think it, it gives us a, a long-term incentive to continue to reinvest in the park, but it also sets up, I think, a good opportunity for the city to make a lot more money in rent over a long period of time. As I mentioned to you before, we're fine with the park as it is right now. We don't have to do the wave pool investment. If, if our company makes a little bit of money each year, it'll take us somewhere between five and 10 years, and I can't forecast the weather, but that's a really important part of our business. And so it'll take us somewhere between five and 10 years for us to recoup the $3 million that we spent. So just, you know, food for thought. That's, that's our, our commitment is to step out and go do this investment because we know in the term of a 30-year lease, it'll pay off for all of us, so.
So we had, had some discussions with Kurt about possible amendments to, to the lease. What we agreed upon and are bringing to council for consideration and approval is to change the current rent structure. As the, as the contract stands today, the lease stands today, the city receives a base rent, which is a small amount of money, but then we receive 15% of all gross revenue, all gross sales over $2.1 million. For those of you who don't know why we chose 2.1 million, that was the last year, that was the base year that we used for Sunsplash revenues when the city ran the park. So we went for, for every dollar that they were able to generate over the 2.1, the city was going to receive 15% of that. With the wave pool, with the Pro Parks investing $2 to $3 million of their own funds into the wave pool, then we talked to Kurt about a revenue sharing plan. And that revenue sharing plan is what is the First Amendment on the additional rent. So once we reach $4 million in gross revenue sales, then our proportion goes from 15% down to 7.5%. The other change is in the capital improvements. It just requires Pro Parks to make the investment. It's basically there in that third paragraph of $3 million in total capital investment. What Kurt didn't mention, but it was in one of the slides, is that as soon as that wave pool is complete, they turn that over to the city and it becomes the property of the city. It is not their wave pool, it is our wave pool. I ran some numbers just to give council an idea of what sort of revenues we're talking about. And the ones to mainly focus on are the ones down below. If we do the, this, this agreement and we change the revenue ratio, the city on that very first section down below, I can't make it right, or down here, yeah, this one here, over the life of the lease would bring in about 22.4, almost 22.5 million dollars. And that's assuming the, that the growth is, the in revenue is about 4% in the out years. You can see up there at the top, the, the years that we're talking about, 2023 through 2031. And years 2032, I actually lowered it. The numbers up above come from Pro, Pro Parks. They use a 5% gross revenue growth, and they're conservative when they use the 5%. I went even a little more conservative and, and used 4% on the out years. But that would generate, again, for the city, over almost 22.5 million dollars. Now, on the bottom, and if we maintain the status quo, on that one, I assumed a 3% gross, revenue, annual growth in, in gross revenues. At that rate, the city would take in about 16.5 million dollars. So the, the delta there is about $6 million that the city would earn over the term of the lease. And I, I do want to point out, too, when we're looking at those numbers, it's important to remember where we were before we entered into this lease agreement with Pro Parks. The numbers that you see on this chart would not be in the positive. As you know, the, the city was subsidizing the operations of the water park. That's one of the, that's one of the beauties of having a company run up, run a, an operation that is, that that's what their expertise is. And so bringing on Pro Parks, it's been far more successful than I imagined that it would be in the first year. So I was very excited when they approached us about the possibility of doing an expansion out there with the wave pool. So with the discussion that was held earlier with Lake Kennedy and going full, full bore on the development there, the parking lot becomes even more of a necessity if you're going to have tournaments out there on 32 pickleball courts. What the parking provides for in the, what the, I think what James was providing, is just for the regular use of the, of the courts there. Those, that parking would not be enough for, for, for any tournaments. So that's the, the agreement that we reached on this, which was we would build the parking lot, they would build the pool, the pool would become ours. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, I'll now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 103-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. And I will open up a discussion or for a motion for ordinance 103-22. Councilmember Welsh.
So part of this is that we're going to be putting a new parking lot in. I don't see any costs associated with what we're going to be paying for the parking lot. Has that been looked at or discussed? Because what I see here is basically we're reducing the rent to Pro Parks for them to put in a wave pool, which is, one, going to get them more customers, and then we're also, as citizens, paying for better parking. So do we even know the cost of what the parking lot's going to be?
The estimates that we had was between $2 to $3 million for us to build the parking lot.
So they're asking us to put a $4 million investment in a parking lot, we're asking them to put a $3 million investment in a wave pool.
I said, I said $2 to $3 million.
And then we're cutting their rent down. So it doesn't make sense to me why we didn't negotiate a better rate for anything over $3 million, because right now, we're going to keep the same money that we have. And we're looking at this as $20 million for the city with it capping out at year 2051. So when this was, when this was brought to us at the COW meeting, I had asked if there was any room to negotiate the change of the rate. I didn't see that we asked, I didn't see that there was any thought. I didn't see any of that in the presentation today, so.
Well, I can, if you're asking if we sat down and talked about different numbers, the answer was yes.
Okay.
But there was not, Mr. Kathy had a number that knew would work for them, and that's the number that we're presenting to you, and that I think is, is actually pretty reasonable. I think we have to remember that this is money that they're putting, they're building the pool, they're putting in their money and their equity, and they're taking all the risk. Then they're going to give that pool to the City of Cape Coral. That pool is going to generate more revenue, which we both hope will generate more revenue. And then we're going to share in that additional revenue.
Yeah, but what's the lifespan of a pool? I mean, if we're looking at 20 years now, and we're looking at 2050 is when your lease expires, you're, we're basically getting.
It'll far exceed the term of the lease. But, I mean, it'll, it'll need, it'll need additional renovations throughout the years. And, you know, sometimes a wave pool renovation can be a million or $2 million based on a complete resurface, and you'll have to replace all the wave equipment about every 10 years. These are things that we're prepared to do and ordinarily do in our existing parks.
And I agree, and I think the wave pool is great. I think things are good, but where my problem is, is that in order to get to this wave pool, we're, we're already taking from where the park is making money to this point, we're now cutting our percentage in half, and the city is still going to spend $4 million, which on a parking lot. So to, to me, I just think the way the numbers look and what I asked for wasn't given to me before now. So it's, I'm going to be not voting no on the wave pool, we're voting no on the fact that we're cutting the percentage to 7.5, because when we were sold on, the city's going to still gain money from this, and, and now the percentage is less because it's, it's working? I don't, I don't, I don't know. It's just tough for me to, to do.
I might just make. So, so council member, while the percentage is less, you're still generating more. You're generating additional monies as a result of the investment, monies that you will not be able to generate if you don't make the investment, because there's only so many people, there's only so much throughput that you can get through the park. So ultimately, you're going to reach a point of diminishing return. You're not going to be able to generate any additional monies without making significant enhancements to the park. So that's why we can, we can defend a different tier above the $4 million, because that's realistically money that we're probably not going to, to attain, I think, until 2025 or 2026. And so, so again, this is additional money that you would not otherwise generate but for that additional amenity coming online.
I, I agree, and I was here at the COW meeting, and I asked at the COW meeting if this was the best deal that we worked out. And to me, I don't, I don't think it is. So that's why I'm going to be not voting no on the wave pool, but I'm going to be voting no on the fact that we're cutting our rent in half just to get a wave pool when we have to spend an additional $4 million to put a parking lot in. So it's not for the advancement of the park, it's just for the simple fact that I, I don't feel that what I asked for at the COW meeting was done, and I would either postpone this or try to renegotiate. So that's why it's going to be a no vote for me.
So council member, we were asked to attempt to renegotiate different terms. Ms., Ms. Barron and Mr. Mason did that, but in order to have an agreement, both sides have to, have to consent to it. And so as Ms. Barron mentioned, I'm not speaking for, for Sunsplash, but they had their number that they needed to reach in order for this to, for this transaction to move forward, and apparently that hasn't changed from the initial proposal.
Right, and just the economics for us are, we might make somewhere between, after we pay the rent, $300,000 to $500,000. So if we put $3 million in today, it'll take me five to seven years to make that money back. So I'm net zero through that seven-year period, which is okay, because I've got a long-term perspective. And as I said before at the meeting we had before, I, you know, we don't have to do the wave pool, we can stay the way we are, we can leave the amenity base where it is, and you can expect revenues to be where they are, and that's a fine place for us all to be. You'll make somewhere around $220,000 to $285,000 in rent for the foreseeable future. And I'll make somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 in earnings. Then I'll have to pay property taxes and other things, but it's not, there's not enough in it for us to go say, let's advance $3 million today. So that, and that's okay. It's a, it's a fine place to be, we'll all be happy there. But for us to be incentivized to put the wave pool in and not know that if we're going to potentially have another windy event at some point in June where I would lose the full operating season, and that's just on me to make that up, for me to take this kind of a risk, I have to have some sort of incentive to do so. And that's where, that's where we landed on it. So I just wanted to have that color. We're not walking away from it, but we, we certainly can stay where we are today.
Can you tell us what we made last year?
Last year?
Sunsplash. The city, what was the city paid as far as the rent and the percentage? You know, I know now anything over 2.1 million, we get 15%, and we pay a base rent, or you pay a base rent. We receive the base rent.
It's, it's, it's due on March 31st, so we're paying you that this year, and I, I expect we're going to, you know, we're still finalizing the year, we just finished the final year, catching all our deferred revenues, but I think we'll be close to $4 million in gross revenue, so somewhere in the neighborhood of $285,000 will be the rent payment this year.
All right, and with that being said, I ran some numbers while we were sitting here. You know, this year we'll, should get about $285,000. And basically, let's use the $4.1 million. You know, if, if this year, if you, if you base, base it on 4.1 million, and we get, we get 15% above that 2.1 million, it's going to be close to $300,000 that we will get in rent. And let's just use the same $4.1 million with the new formula that they want to utilize. If we only received the 4.1 million, then we only get 7.5% on $100,000, because the threshold was raised from 2.1 to 4 million. So that means we get $7,500. And the great thing is we get to spend $4 million for a parking lot, too. So not only do we receive $292,500 less, we get to spend almost $4 million for a parking lot. To me, that doesn't seem like a good deal. I mean, the numbers do not.
But you're also ending up with a $3 million. But you're also ending up with a $3 million amenity.
No, we're not.
You're getting the wave pool.
Yeah, but we're spending three, you know, $4 million on a parking lot.
On a parking lot that has multiple uses.
All right. So I just say, for looking at it as a business approach for us, and that's what we, the council, are looking at, is for the best interest of the city and the use of tax dollars. The numbers for me just don't work personally. I realize that in order to make more money, you have to spend money. But here, we are spending money getting less. To me, you know, if you just use the numbers that I just that I just explained, I mean, the 4.1 million now, say next year, we get we have 4.1 million. And we're going to agree to this formula. This year, we're going to get almost 300. Next year, we're going to get 7,500. And we spent $4 million. Me, that doesn't.
I'm not sure on the.
Yeah, I would say, Mr. Mayor, you're still getting 15% up to 4.1 million, just to make sure we're clear on that.
Right, from the 2.1 to 4.
We're not changing anything on the 2.1 to 4 million. So you're still getting $285,000. So I'm not understanding your $7,500 number.
Well, it's my understanding that the new formula is going to be anything, we're going to raise that threshold to $4 million.
No, the threshold still stands at 2.1.
It's at 2.1.
But we are just changing.
At at 4 million, it changes.
7.5%.
At 4 million, it changes. Right, right.
Above four, say that again.
So from 2.1 million to 4 million, the 15% that you currently have.
It's these.
Okay. Once we cross the $4 million threshold, then anything above
All right.
4 million, we get 7.5%, but we're still getting the 15% between 2.1 and 4.
Okay.
Right.
Councilmember Long.
Because we've already capped that $4 million before the addition of the wave pool.
Side, that's that's where that stands. Listen, I got the utmost respect for these guys. They came in and turned a loser into a significant winner. I mean, they're obviously, they know what they're doing. That's why we brought them in. What they've been able to do in this short period, I don't think they anticipated, which is part of the reason why we're having this discussion. I'm a businessman. I'm just going to say it. This is a great deal for the city of Cape Coral, because we frankly, I think we were running it so poorly that they weren't able to make accurate projections when they made that deal for the 15%. That being said, a deal is a deal, right? So for me, for us to negotiate against ourselves here by lowering this deal under the guise of, and again, they're businessmen, that why wouldn't they ask us for some sort of input? It doesn't, to me, it doesn't make much sense. I mean, you guys are, what you've been able to do here is great. It's an incredible asset to the city. I love the idea of expanding. But I don't think that the city, we got out of the business for a reason. We got out of the theme park business, quote unquote, for a reason. That's why we handed it over. And now here we are, finally saying, thank God, we can get this off of our books out of deficit for the last however many years. And now we're sinking more money into it after we've already handed it over. Now, I will say, because I like to deal fairly and transparently, that I think the $4 million number for the parking lot that's been thrown around, they've wanted to fix it. It's not, it's lower.
It's two to three.
Right, two to three. 3.2, well, exactly. So that's my point. I was excited to learn that we had somehow mysteriously from the last meeting to this meeting, got a $1 million discount on the parking lot, because it was originally presented.
I'm sorry, councilmember, I just could, I didn't remember. I just didn't remember what the number was.
Okay, yeah, because it makes it sound a little bit better.
I was not trying to.
Okay, that's fine. I understand. You got, I mean, and you guys are, are you, did you, how did the season operate this year? Did you operate basically in the the regular season? I know typically, historically, Sunsplash has operated under a limited season. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We operated under a pretty much the same season that it has operated. We added a bunch of days where we could.
Right.
And we had anticipated going through the end of November through Thanksgiving.
You will be anticipating moving forward, you mean?
That would be our goal, but, you know, we need to be careful about
Great.
swarly wind events, right?
Okay. So even better, because now you just indicated that those figures are with less days. So when we move forward and they expand those days, the city's going to benefit even greater without donating or without contributing $3.2 million, because our 14% or 15% is going to be in excess of that $4 million when they expand their schedule. So that's more money that we're going to be turning away when we reduce, under this proposed deal, our income from the profit sharing, percentage rent here, from 15 to seven. Right out of the gate, it doesn't make sense for me, without me even having to speak as much as I have. We put in 3.5 million, they put in 2 million. I shouldn't have to say anything further, but in addition to that, we're also lowering our future shared revenues. In exchange, it just doesn't make sense.
And they're they're actually putting in more than 2 million.
It's three.
Correct, it's three, but you guys have, now you've packaged the three as part of an entrance house, I believe, which I guess is part of it, but that's not really part of it.
Yeah, it's part of the lease agreement, that they will do the enhanced entrance and all that, those improvements as well.
Part of the amendment that you mean, the proposed amendment or the actual existing agreement?
No, it's it's the amendment.
Correct.
It's it's holding them to doing that project.
Right.
Again, it's it is up to council. When we when we outsourced the operation of Sunsplash, we we outsourced it just the facility the way the facility is. We were, we wanted it, though, to be something for the community and for the kids in the community, and even the adults in the community to enjoy. The fact that we have an opportunity, or at least they have presented us with an opportunity to expand the facility and to provide more incentives and more and just more play opportunities for the community, it just seemed like it was something that we wanted to bring to council. I don't know that we anticipated when we initially thought about outsourcing the operations that we would have the opportunity to expand. We knew that if we kept it under our authority and our control, that any expansion at Sunsplash was probably not going to happen, because we were not ever going to be able to generate $3 million to build a wave pool, or another million dollars, million and a half dollars to improve an entrance and stuff. So we knew that that was not going to happen, that if that was going to happen, it was going to have to come from the general fund and from the tax dollar. So the fact that he's, Pro Parks is able to generate enough revenue that the city can make a pretty good amount of a coin here, and still be able to, and then take that money and reinvest it into the property and to make it a more desirable location and more desirable destination, we just thought that that was a good opportunity and a good use of the revenues that are being generated to the city from this.
And I'd like to also add a couple comments to Ms. Baron's statements. In about two, two and a half years, just an hour south of here, a new regional water amusement park is going to be opening up. They chose to go to Naples. They didn't choose to come to Cape Coral or or Lee County. They're going to the Naples area. That is going to be a significant competitor to Sunsplash. So why would a parent take their children to Sunsplash, which although this company has done a great job reinvigorating the facility and injecting new life to the facility, it's basically a tired facility that hasn't changed much over 15 years. There's nothing really new there, other than the amenities that that our partner has introduced. So given the choice of loading up the minivan, station wagon, whatever, and go into Sunsplash, or do you want to go to the Great Wolf Lodge? I've had conversations with several of you as recently as this week, who who lamented over the fact that, you know, you've got school-aged children, and you're frustrated over the fact that you've got to leave Cape Coral in order to do something to keep your kids busy, because there just aren't any amenities in the city. And you're, you also lamented that you're taking all of your money, and that's part of our economic development strategy, right? How do we recapture more money in the city of Cape Coral? So you're not loading up the minivan and going to Naples and spending your $200 in Naples instead of Cape Coral. So again, this is part of the evolution of of the park. And and you've got to inject new life into it. The park has to evolve, or eventually, and I don't share the enthusiasm that Pro Parks does, I think that over time, the the park is going to get stale. And, you know, even though they're projecting 5%, I think Ms. Baron, I agree with Ms. Baron's projections when she brought it down to 3%, because if we don't bring new items on online, our families are not going to go that, go there. And I think that, you know, when you look at all the theme parks in the Orlando area, they recognize that. That's why they're constantly renewing their their properties and constantly jacking up their up their rates. And we gladly make the trek two and three times a year and pay more money, because the park gives us a new amenity every year for us to to pay more money over. So I just throw that out food for thought, and if this is something that council is uncomfortable with, that's fine, we understand. We think we've negotiated a good deal with our our partner, but if we're not able to convince you, then we haven't done our job, and we can revisit it at a later date. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I still have the floor, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they had went on a, no. So can we can we pull up the projection slide again, please? While we're doing that, just a note on the the city manager's response with regards to competition. I mean, we got out of the theme park business because we didn't feel like we needed to involve ourselves in that. So it is a private enterprise, which they very much are now. I would believe that it would be the obligation of a private enterprise to invest in their business to keep up with profitability in light of the fact that you might have competition. Now, the other side of that coin, of course, you might come back and say, yeah, but if they lose, we lose. But in reality, the figures as they are, if we maintain the status quo, even if they do decline significantly, we're not running at a deficit like we have been for the many years prior. So if they lose, it's to a degree that's far less than the amount that we've lost over the last several years. With that being said, if you look at this chart here, it's been said really briefly, the basically the net float, if we went with the proposal, 22 million, 448 to the city. If we maintain the status quo at 16, 445, which I don't know why we went with 4% for the prior and 3% for the latter, because 1% certainly doesn't account for their projected increase in revenues, you get $6 million in the middle. Well, the $6 million, I don't think it sounds good personally, but that's not even factoring in the 3.2 slash probably $4 million that we are investing in the project. So that immediately goes down from 6 to $2 million that we're netting in these projections over a 30-year period. We almost just shut down the whole government, as far as the budget's concerned, because we couldn't come to an agreement about what we wanted to do with $4 million as far as our projects. And now here we are, saying, oh, it's okay, let's basically issue debt so that we can help a private enterprise spend 3.5 million for a parking lot. It makes, to me, it makes no sense how it even got this far. But I won't go on, I could go on much longer, but this to me is.
If I may respond, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
So if we were proposing a parking lot that the water park would be the sole beneficiary of, I could see that point. But we are proposing a parking lot that is going to be used not only but Sunsplash, by Sunsplash. It's also going to be used by the main tenant at that location, which is the Lake Kennedy Racket Center, that you agreed today to significantly expand. There's also the Cape Coral Animal Shelter, who has an obligation to build parking in conjunction with their expansion. So this is an opportunity to bring together the needs of three different uses that exist on the site, and we all mutually benefit from a new parking area. So so again, this is not just about building parking for Sunsplash. This is about building a parking lot for the Lake Kennedy complex. And the funds that we are talking about using for the parking lot are monies that are being generated exclusively by the Lake Kennedy, by this transaction, by this relationship, that all of you agreed previously that you were going to reinvest those funds back into Lake Kennedy, much like we do with the yacht club. And that's why we established a a special revenue fund just for Lake Kennedy. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, since this is the last thing I promised, I'm still technically have the floor. I anticipated that staff was going to make that spin, which is why I directly asked the gentleman in the previous presentation if on those site plans, they had determined that we had adequate parking for Lake Kennedy Park as part of that Phase Two, which increased the parking in that section. And the gentleman's answer was yes. So staff's saying, well, technically, we do have that, but we're going to have these in the future, we're going to have all these tournaments, and we're going to need this overflow parking lot for the tournaments. To the $2 and a $3.5 million, I don't, I just, that doesn't make sense. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yeah, I don't want to repeat. I agree with a lot of what our councilman just said. I also don't believe that we should be in a panic to help them with their new competitor. That's the whole reason that we signed the lease, so we wouldn't have to worry about things like that anymore. We signed a lease, it's their baby, we're making money. So I I don't, I don't see us, I don't see the numbers working either. We have other businesses in our city that have to change their game all the time as things change, and they have to make investments to their business. And I don't see the business, the city bending over backwards to help all these other businesses when they have to make major alterations to stay afloat. We've even had businesses that we have charged for parking that the city decided to put in, I think, in the CRA. Didn't we charge businesses for parking that the city put in? So I don't want to repeat what was already said, but it doesn't sit with me well. I like the fact that they're doing well. I think they're doing a great job. Happy with the deal we have now. I don't want to have to worry about their competition, and that's why we signed a lease with them, so we don't have to worry about that. That's something that they're professionals with their business, and and they know what they have coming down the plike, and they have to worry about that. And I don't see us getting a wave pool, because the extended lease, who knows, 10 or 15 years from now, that that feature might be obsolete. They might be reaping ripping it out for something new that comes along. So for us saying that, you know, when their lease is up, we're going to have a wave pool, that does nothing for me at all. That's it. Thank you.
And as I've said, councilmember, numerous times, we can make the water park whatever we want to make it. And we can use some of that 22, in this case, what could be $22 million to to enhance the park. Or we can continue to keep it in the fund that the city manager has identified that we were investing it. Again, it is up to council. This was just an opportunity to expand the park and make it something a little bit more than what it is today, but we can certainly keep it as it is.
If I could just make one more comment. You know, when we, to your point earlier, Councilman Long, you know, we, our projections were, we didn't really have a full understanding of everything. So the facility is woefully underparked. The way it was operated before, there wasn't enough parking. So if I generate additional attendance on these additional days, that's fine. But if it comes Memorial Day to Labor Day, which it does, it's woefully underparked. It's always been, and it will continue to be. And as we improve it, the existing parking lot is going to be full. And that's okay. Like I said, we can live in this world. It's fine. But I just want you all to be aware of it. That's going to be the next thing that we're going to need to work out, some way for us to either buy additional land or find a remote parking lot in the city that we can bus people in. And we'll figure that out. That's not a problem. But it doesn't make sense for us to go buy land and build a wave pool and do other things like that. It gets too complicated. So we'll go back to the drawing board and think about something else that might be an enhancement for the park over some other period of time. But like I said, we're fine where we are. This was an opportunity where we saw, okay, we think we can actually have a deal that works for everybody. If it doesn't, we absolutely understand.
Councilmember Stein.
Just a couple of quick questions, and then my comment. In your other enterprises, have you ever had to add a wave pool in any of the others?
We've added a lot of attractions, not wave pools. They all were originally built with a wave pool. Most water parks, when they're built, that's the first thing we put in.
Okay, thank you. And does our lease have a maintenance requirement? I'm I'm sure that the that the wave pool will require maintenance or repair.
Absolutely, absolutely, it will. And so it's a triple net lease, so I pay for everything. I spent a half million dollars this year from March, or sorry, from January to March to make the park ready to operate. Those were things that needed to be done before, but we stepped in and we did all that. So and that's good and ordinary. That's part of a triple net lease. So yes, absolutely. Anything that happens on the property, my expense, my challenge, absolutely.
Okay, so my comment, and I I really like to be on board with as many people as I can be, but I have to speak from a different angle on this issue. I I see us put millions of dollars into our parks. We get zero return. It's an amenity for our citizens. It's awesome, and I'm glad that we do it. But in this case, we have a park that we can invest more. a park that we can invest money in, that our citizens will gain benefit from, and that we have the opportunity to make money in the venture. We're not Orlando. We're not the amusement parks in Orlando, but every one of them knows that they need to remain relevant. And so this amenity in our city that we will hope would remain relevant to keep our citizens here rather than go someplace else, to have something new to be involved in, on a property that we own. We lease it. We still own it. So when we put a parking lot in it, we're making in addition to our own asset that we are charging rent for the business that's looking to partner with us, if you will. And when we invest our money in the parking lot, it's our parking lot. When we invest money in, when they invest money in the wave pool, it's our wave pool. So unless I'm missing something here, I really think this, in the long run, to maintain competitive advantages against other opportunities that our current citizens and things that would attract other citizens to be here because there are more things for their children to do, more variety for their families. Um, I'm not so sure that we're not short-sighting this thing in just talking about a $6 million difference over a period in time where we have to invest 3.2 million to gain the six. I think we're gaining more than that. I think we're gaining an attraction to our area, and I don't mean a physical attraction. I mean an attraction by others to come here. Um, and we're the landlord in this venture, and we have the opportunity to increase our rent. And 10 years from now, is that about right? About 10 years from now, if we don't renegotiate the lease, or another vendor doesn't come in, we, we still have everything that we gained by saying yes to this. And so I, um, I'm, I'm going to speak in favor of, of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I actually agree with Councilmember Steinke, but I have a question or two to solidify my position. Um, I know in the contract now, there's a requirement that you set aside money for improvements, and I can't remember.
4%.
Okay.
4% of gross revenues.
So at what point would you be able to build the wave pool without this help?
So if we're doing 4 million in revenues, $160,000 a year, you know, times 10 years, we won't be there yet.
Okay, so.
It'll take a while. Yeah.
This isn't going to happen.
That's a requirement, though, that, so you know we're going to maintain and keep adding things. And so we won't, we won't do a wave pool. We'll do a water slide for a half million dollars in four or five years, something like that. We, we change our focus, and it won't draw the same number of people to the park, and that's okay. It's, it's, the math will still work. So, but yeah, the wave pool will change, you're actually very accurate, and it'll change the attraction that sunsplash pushes out into other communities. It's a major amenity.
My other question is, when would that lot have been built realistically, if not the parking lot? When would, question for Connie or Rob?
Other than the need, so let me, let me divide the answer up this way. So the animal shelter, when they complete their next phase, and I don't know when that is, they have to build a certain number of parking spaces. I want to say 32 parking spaces, but don't hold me to that. But that's all they have to build. Um, as far as our program, the concept that you approved for Lake Kennedy, it did not have parking going in there at all. In fact, you have still a lot of grass parking as part of the concept and the contract that you're awarding today, grass parking.
That was my thought, too, that there were sufficient parking.
Not paved.
So this would not have happened if not for this request?
I don't believe so. It was not part of the plan for the Lake Kennedy complex. And I don't know, I wasn't here when the, the council approved the, the concept for Lake Kennedy.
Thank you.
And, and I believe if we're going to generate additional, uh, need for parking, it's not as if we can just start parking six or 700 cars or four or 500 cars on grass, uh, lots, because I think the city's ordinance has some sort of requirement for improved parking.
Right. The issue there on the, the particular site that we're talking about is a, is a former landfill.
Yeah.
And so we would not allow grass, um, parking on the grass over the landfill. Um, so it has to be a stabilized surface, meaning it has to be asphalt, concrete, or something along those lines. And it has to be an impervious surface.
Right.
So we will not be able to, um, based on my conversations with our public works personnel, be able to use that area as a grass overflow parking lot, because it serves as a cap for the former landfill that was, that was there from many years ago.
Councilmember Welsh, before I go to you, I'm going to give Councilmember Hayden and Cummings, uh, the opportunity, uh, since they haven't spoke yet, and then I'll come back to you. Uh, Councilmember Cummings?
Yes, so I, I feel, and I know many other people feel, as, as a mother with children, we need more amenities in the city. The city is extremely large, and we lack a lot in this city. And the biggest thing that I hear a lot of complaints are about is there's not enough for, you know, there's nothing for us to do. You know, I want to do something, and we leave the city. And my biggest complaint is, is we don't have enough tax money coming into the city because everybody's going over the bridge. So I'm in favor for this because you're modernizing sunsplash, giving them a little bit of something new. Um, going into phase two, bringing those more amenities in, which is good, which I feel brings more traction into Lake Kennedy, which means it could bring more money. My question to you, it's obvious most of the di, diocese here is having a problem with the monies. My first impression, when I saw this, I said the first thing, 7%. We go from this to this, and we're giving all of this and all this advertising? Are you willing to renegotiate these numbers? Because I feel that the diocese is in agreement that they would like to see this attraction, but many of us with the numbers were, were kind of like, you know, you go here and we're, we're dropping here and we're putting all this money here. But we know you're going to do well because you're modernizing it and you have Lake Kennedy, which is being upgraded. Um, so my question to you is, would you be willing to, to reconsider the amount of monies in exchange?
Those are fair questions, and I'm, I'm glad you raised that. We talked about that already when we, when we went back to negotiate. My request on that backside of that negotiation would be you backstop my bottom line somehow, because if I catch a hurricane in June, I can't, I can't make it to the next year. I got to go from June to March with my own cash flow to make that happen. It won't work. I, I'll end up in a situation where I, I can't fund my payroll or something like that, right? Because it, and so that's why you need to have years where we have good years, just like any business, where we can store up cash for the bad years that we know will come in the length of a 30-year agreement. So on this particular investment, we're stretched as far as we can go. And if we had two hurricanes in two years, it would be a real, real challenge for us. We'd make it because I have other businesses that would fund it. But I can't put myself at a risk where I'd have to go three years or beyond. And so the math just doesn't work for us to do anything different than this. And, you know, I wish the, the parking lot was something you could build for $800,000. Then we wouldn't be having this conversation, I'm sure.
Right.
It's just not. And so the, the, the fact that it can't be gravel, that it has to be paved, that it's that location, you know, those are all things that I, I don't have any control.
Well, if, if you don't mind, um, there are tiers that you can go to. So in business, um, to help you get started because of the remodel and construction and all that, we've had a hurricane, da, 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 da. But the tiers, kind of like where we're at now, uh, the more monies that is being made on your end, the more monies that the city makes. So you would have the percentages rising as you rise. So it's not cutting your throat. So it's keeping you in business, keeping the profits coming in, and it's, 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 uh, it's a growth.
I, I understand, but for performative purposes, we, we show, like Connie showed a 4%, I showed a 5% growth. But we all know that's not how business works. It's a 7% one year, it's a negative four the next. And so when, when we manage those variables as they actually might happen, and we go through that every day in our ordinary water park businesses, it puts us in too many low points where we would just, wouldn't be able to make payments for, you know, any number of things, whether, whether we don't pay the rent, or we don't pay our employees, or we, you know. And we don't ever want to be in that position. We like to be in a stable position so we can, you know, that's how we've been able to survive and make our businesses go well through COVID. Um, and so all of our water parks in Texas that were all open during COVID, when this water park wasn't, we were open the whole summer. And it's because we managed to the, to the, you know, the safest but best way we can. And so it's a, it's a, it's a, we've done all the risk calculation on this particular investment. If the answer's no, we can go back to the drawing board and come back some other time, maybe a, a later date and see if there's something else that might work. It's, you know, I, I, I really, I, I, this doesn't hurt our relationship if the answer's no. We, we love you. We're, we're real excited about where we are today. We're very excited about it. We wanted to put some more of our capital to work, but we can't put $6 million to work to hope that we can, you know, if, if I'm making, let's just say a half million dollars a year in profit, if I put $6 million to work, I just, I'm, it's going to take forever for us to get back to zero. The math just doesn't work. So I understand everything that's been said, and it's fair. But on our side, we have to protect the downside for what the realities of business are.
So you wouldn't be willing to reconsider looking at the tier levels? So in the tier level, as you would grow, the, then, then the percentage would grow. But if you're dropping, then that would drop. So it, it's basically the, the up and down.
No, and we, we talked some about that when we, when we did our negotiations. The, the challenge for us is that I, I, it's not forecastable. And, and I have such a long negative cash period in this operating business. And you know it because you owned it as a city. Most of the year, except for basically June through August, you're in a negative operating cash position. And so if something happens in that time period, you have to get from, you know, August to the next March on a very deep negative cash period. So if I'm not building up some reserves to be able to manage that, then it just doesn't, then I, I don't have the protection I need in the off years when you have the bad events that, that might happen. So, I mean, we, we went through it, and those are all great points. I'm glad you raised them because we've had those conversations. But, um, and, and love to find a way to make it work, but if it doesn't, we understand.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
I don't know, the vote might be closer than what you think it is, because, uh, I for one, and it's unlike me to be in the minority, but I for one, uh, like this idea. And I'm going to set the table this way. Um, we saw a lot of amusement parks, golf courses set revenue records, um, this year, including our own Coral Oaks, um, because this is the first full year without a pandemic hanging over our heads. So more people, more people will, will get out. So the standard changed a little bit from that perspective. So, um, and I'll guarantee you this, my fellow council members, without the wave pool, their revenues aren't going to, aren't going to change. So to me, I look at it, they're essentially expanding the park. Right now, they're kind of squeezed with the area that they have. With the wave pool, this is our best chance to get past $4 million in revenue. Um, so to me, that 7% is only a bonus for, for us, because we're not even going to be talking about 7% as far as I'm concerned. We'll be still at that 15%, um, because we're not going to get to, we're not going to get to 4 million. Um, I think this will be a more realistic year if the weather holds out for you on what attendance is like because of what we just came off of. So I, I'm going to look at it, you know, I'm going to look at it that way. Um, I think this gives you the ability. And we, we told him, we told him when all this started that we wanted him to add amenities. And now we sit up here and tell him that, well, it's not good enough because we're not making enough money off of it. Um, I don't, I don't think that's a fair business approach at all. He's, he's given us another opportunity to make another 7%. And I think that's huge. I, I think that's a big deal. Um, you know, as, as far as a parking lot, we have public parking lots that benefit, that benefit businesses all over the place in the city. And, you know, to me, with the opportunities we're going to have at Lake Kennedy, um, and I mentioned this even with the pickleball courts, is there's an opportunity here for the city and surrounding businesses to make money off of tournaments or other events that may take place on the pickleball courts. So, you know, again, we get a little short sighted up here when sometimes I only think a year in advance. You know, you look 10, 15 years down the road, you know, if we're attracting tournaments into this place, you know, that's going to be a big de, big deal for the city. We're seeing what happened in Charlotte. We're seeing what's happened in Naples with their tournaments. We know what the demand is. This isn't a sport that's going to go away. It's only going to get bigger. So this, this parking lot's going to get used. The parking spaces now for Lake Kenny and racquetball are, are going to be for everyday, you know, recreational players. There's certainly not enough spaces there right now for a tournament, not of this size, not when you're talking about six, 700 players and their families coming in. And that's where everything benefits around there, is, uh, you take Lake Kennedy, the benefit of those courts is, those families are going to want something to do when they're there for a tournament. They're going to walk across the street and go to sunsplash. So everything benefits each other, including the parking lot and what it's going to, what it's going to bring for us. So for those council members who are still on the side that they think this is a bad deal, think about it all the way through and think about what the benefits are. There isn't any spin going on here. Um, you know, this, this is a realistic approach to something that benefits the city. It certainly wasn't there, um, in the past. And I, and I think we're in a great posi, position now to work with a, uh, a partner that's, uh, proven that this park can be successful when we didn't think it was. And, you know, and look where we're going now. So, you know, I'm, I'm voting for this. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. Um, hearing what you've heard from council, uh, do you think you'd be up for negotiating the percentage rate? Because I think what, what I'm looking at is you're putting in 4 million to a wave pool, and we're putting in 4 million to a parking lot, or 3.2 million or 3. whatever. Yes, the city's going to have the opportunity to use the parking lot for other parks. But also, if the city decided to charge for parking there, would that hurt the amount of people coming into, uh, into your facility, which you're renting from the city? So we could recoup the money for the parking lot either by, um, charging for parking. I don't think we want to go that route. What I'm saying is, um, where my hangup on this is that we basically cut the rent in half, and we're spending and investing as a city the same amount of money into, uh, future growth for your business as well. So I, I know you said you guys negotiated everything, but hearing what you're hearing now, uh, if this doesn't pass, do you see a probability of maybe negotiating from the seven and a half percent to another tier, to where maybe it goes from the, uh, what is it, 15 down to 10, from the ranges of 3 to 6 million in revenue? And once you gain the 6 million, it goes down to the seven and a half. So I don't know if that was even discussed, or if, after hearing from other council members, if it's something you might be interested in.
Well, part, part of what we negotiated in this was that this would be the last modification of the lease price, right? Because this sets us up to be able to make more, uh, investments down the road. So if this goes well, and the wave pool comes in, and we're all seeing the results that we thought we would, the first thing we're going to do is say, let's do more, because we'll have the additional parking to cover that. And so when we put the next ride in, that'll be on my nickel. And I fully expect that we'll be putting in, in a 30-year term of a lease, probably another six or seven rides after this. That's the way these businesses work. And so that's, that's a given. Um, but to get to a, a level where you can do that, you have to have the parking. So if we don't solve it today, one day we will, if we ever really want to grow the size of sunsplash. If we don't want to grow it, that's okay. It can be the size it is today. It works. There'll be some challenges and tough years, and we'll work together on that. And I'm sure there'll be some great years together that we'll share as well. And so I'm, I'm not worried about that. The, the challenge becomes if we try to negotiate something different, it'll cut me out on those next investments. And so we negotiated something that would be kind of the final amendment that, you know, we can call it the final amendment if that helps. But, you know, at the end of the day, these are the economics that we know will work and that will incentivize us to keep. So if I, if I made an extra, you know, half million bucks this year, I may turn around and say, let's just put that back in into another ride, as opposed to it being all my profit. When you see what we make on the backside of this, we still have to take money out of that and keep the park fresh and new. And it's not the, you know, the, the 4% that, that I talked about earlier. It's more than that. That's what this is. This, $3 million is not part of any percent that we are supposed to do. This is us coming to you saying, in the water park business, we know what drives attendance and growth, and it's a wave pool. and it's a wave pool, and I can't just do it and not have additional parking. And the existing parking lot, even if we paved it all, wouldn't be enough space. So this became the natural place to look, and, you know, I just can't afford to do the parking and the wave pool and make it all work. So that's where we are. So I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, and just to iterate what he just said, the reason we agreed to the 7.5% was because we said, we don't want you coming back to us again and asking us for more concessions when you're ready to build something else. And so we said, at the 7.5%, they would use any, the profits, and they would reinvest into the, into the park. So if he wants to do a half million dollar ride, he's not going to be coming to the city and saying, can we now change that from 7.5% down to 5%? So there's not going to be any more negotiating down from the city's percentage. Any additional rights that get built out there and added to the park and any other amenities will be on his dime. And as he said, they tend to add, over the life of the lease, four, five, six more amenities if they can. But they have to be able to bring that revenue in in order to do that.
And I agree that we need new amenities. We also are limited in space there. So there's only so much more we can do. And just what I feel is that we're taking what was sold to us as a 15% profit share to help recover what was, it is. Now that we've hit that threshold, we're cutting it in half. So what I would have wanted to see is more of a tiered system, and we can set it up now, where from, you know, 4 million to 6, I mean, the cost of living is going up. Eggs are $6 a dozen. So it's going to cost more to get into a park. It's going to cost more for this. And all we're doing, as the city is saying, over the course of 20 years, we're only going to make this on our property. So to me, it just seems like there is room to negotiate, not that I don't think we need to upgrade the park, but I just feel like we, I don't know if we dropped the ball on it, or if it just wasn't brought up.
Well, I just want to take a slight exception with the terminology that you used when you said you were, that you were sold a 15%, and now we're changing it. When we negotiated the lease and we brought it to council for approval, we were not anticipating the opportunity to be able to build a wave pool, add a wave pool to the, to the Sunsplash facility this soon. So there was no, no one sold anybody. That was the agreement. Those were the parameters of the lease, that this is what we were going to get, 15% going out. But this opportunity has come up where we can add the wave pool, make the change at 4 million to go to the 7.5%. And then, as Kurt mentioned, any future additions, and he can tell you, I know you said the site's limited, and he realizes that, but what we're talking, the wave pool's a big addition, but other additions are not going to take up that much space. So I just was going to.
Right. Most of those new additions go vertical, right? So you can go up, and there's very little vertical in the park now in use. So there's a lot of things we can do over time. So, and maybe we go that direction instead of the wave pool. But I wish, I wish I had some room, Councilman Welsh, to find some ways to do this, but I can tell you, I've spent hours with my partners trying to figure out ways to make it work, and it just, it just doesn't for us, because we go out and put $3 million to work, and, you know, it has to work for us and get us a return and get additional rent. And if it doesn't generate the additional rent, we're out the $3 million, and there's no additional return for us. If we don't get above $4 million, it is what it is, right? We didn't expect to be at 4 million this year. You're very right about that. It's been a really good year, and I believe Mr. Hayden said that it was a bounce back year, and it was. But all of our water parks had a record year in 2021 outside of Cape Coral. So our first year in '22, we have a record year here, too. So, don't know if I can have that next year, but with an amenity, I think it starts to get, the future looks much better.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I don't disagree with my colleagues that this is an amenity, it's an asset. The city would benefit greatly from it, the residents would benefit greatly from it. But what I do disagree with is the consensus among a couple of you that the city should be in the business of funding, or helping a private enterprise fund this amenity to quote unquote attract people or bring people into the city to the $2 and $3.5 million. To Councilmember Steinkie's point, you know, we're buying in, we're investing, it's going to bring people in, it's going to bring people over the bridge. I believe, Councilmember Steinkie, you attended last evening, yesterday evening, Gator Mikes. That, again, private business invested millions of dollars into, of his own money, without coming to the city asking for help, to create a quote unquote amenity for our residents that will be a destination and will draw people in. So while you were there, why didn't you offer him several million dollars for his next venture? Where do we draw the line here? Because that doesn't make sense to me that we find ourselves in this unique position, only when it comes to Pro Parks, that we decide that we want to invest millions of dollars into an amenity to draw people into the city, but other private and independent profitable ventures, we say you're on your own. You know.
Was the question rhetorical, or do you have an answer?
You can press your button and answer it if you'd like.
He owns all of it.
The point, the point being, yeah, and they owned this amenity for 30 years. It's a 30-year lease, which I believe you said you thought might be 10. 30 years that these guys will have this quote unquote amenity or asset that we're going to supposedly appreciate as the lessor, the landowner. We're not going to take that back over. We're not going to appreciate the benefits of that property after 30 years. What we're going to do, we're going to turn around to the next guy to operate it, or we're going to sell it off, the 30-year-old wave pool. So there's other ways to spend the money is what I'm saying. The gentleman from Pro Parks said himself that it's going to take him five to seven years to break even on this proposed investment. Our break even is over 20 years. So that doesn't tell you the disparity of the equality of our investment versus theirs. I don't know what more I can say that would make you guys believe that that's the case. Thank you.
And Councilmember Shepherd, I think you're up next, but I just want to remind everyone, there still is not a motion on the floor.
Can I make a motion to approve 10422 before he speaks?
All right, so there's a motion. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. With that being said, Councilmember Shepherd.
I think adding the amenity is a great idea. I'm not against that. I'm against the path of how we're getting there. I don't think we're far away, but I don't think we're there. One of the problems that really bothers me is, was your organization promised a certain amount of parking spots for that park to operate?
No, sir. We knew it was, it was a smaller area. We were guided by the previous operators on the ground that it, on busy days, it gets very tight.
So when we doubled the size of the Lake Kennedy project, are we going to hurt their business? I mean, we, I know that any business that opens in our city, a restaurant or whatever, there are formulas to figure out how many parking spots they need. Did we use that same formula to figure out this? I mean, because when we voted earlier, nobody mentioned that we need to add parking spots for the Lake Kennedy project.
Yes, I did.
So we were told we were going to dip into a certain amount of money to make that project happen, but in reality, we actually need more money because we're going to need more parking spots. To look back at a little bit of history, we had the yacht club situation where we signed a lease for the tiki hut, and then after they opened, they, they thought that a third of the parking lot was theirs. I don't know if everybody remembers that situation. It caused a little ruckus, but we fixed it. But I want to make sure that we're not causing any harm to this organization with the Lake Kennedy project, and kind of forces our hand to spend this money on the parking lot. But I think it's a great idea. I just think the path needs to be adjusted. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cummings.
Yes. Talking about the parking. So how much parking do you have now at your facility? When you have a day that you're packed?
Yeah, we have about 250 spaces. And then we use the overflow, which is kind of everywhere that people can park in, inside the fenced area there. And so on, I would say right now about 11 operating days are, we'll turn the parking lot over twice.
And then the additional parking, how many spaces are we looking at?
About 700, which would be more than enough.
About 700 additional parking. So.
I read the wrong number.
I think it was somewhere around the 400.
Oh, 400, about 400.
400.
The new proposed parking lot would be about 400 spaces.
Okay. So I'm trying to figure out something here, okay? Because I'm all about updating. Let's get a little bit more creative. Bobby hit on something, because where I come from, and they still do to this day, when we go to the local pool, we pay to park. So I'm trying to think here on dollars, if you have 400 additional spaces to add on, but you don't go crazy in prices, especially the residents, or they could pay like a membership fee or something like that. You can get creative on that. I'm trying to think of that way with parking. But we're also using this for the park, too. So if we have that filled as well, will this parking space be too small, do you think, especially if you got people doing their activities over the, at Lake Kennedy, but then you've got the pool, the overflow? So, but that would be a great thing, because that means people are here to support it. But kind of like what Councilman Welsh said, we can kind of get a little creative and use the parking, because I do know where I come from, they charge for parking. A lot of people charge for parking, and that's another revenue of income. Now, if, another question, if this does not go through, what was your backup game plan that you wanted to do at this center? If, if, if we don't agree to this, did you have a backup plan of what you would like to do in place of?
There's not, there's not something that would be immediate. We'd have to go back to the drawing board and determine. And we looked at a couple of different waterslide ideas and things like that, but again, we have to marry that with the parking capabilities. So we'll have to go back and see what we can come up with that makes sense from an investment perspective and can still, you know, manage the attendance flow.
So if we looked at the parking, paid parking, you could try to come up with a tier. I know, I know you can, I know you can. Try to figure something out that would be fair, then I think this would be a good idea. But, I mean, the ball's in your court. We're willing to work with you, but you gotta just move a little bit. I mean, we're willing to move, but you gotta kind of move with us so we can come together and make this move forward.
Right. And I hope I haven't come across as inflexible, but we've been negotiating since last June. So it's, we've had a lot of conversations, and I'm not where I started, and the city's not where they started either. And so we've been very much, very flexible on both sides. And so I, for a wave pool and this size of investment in this economy today, this is the numbers that work for us. So, you know, in paid parking, it used to be paid before we took over the facility, now it's free. And so I think that would be a really hard thing to introduce back into the city, that now if I want to go into one of these areas, I got to pay to park. I would be not an advocate of charging people to park, because I think people like free parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, though.
Yeah, it sounds like if this doesn't pass, there's still some opportunity to have further negotiations. You know, I can see a benefit for the parking, not only for this facility, but Lake Kennedy facility. But for me personally, my vote will be no on the presentation and the agreement that was brought forth here tonight. But I don't think it's a, you know, for me, it wouldn't be a, I'm not shutting the door completely on that. I just think for me, there's some more negotiations that could take place. When you go into a business agreement, it has to be beneficial for both parties. And that's exactly what this is. This is a partnership on investment. You're willing to make that investment because you know it's probably going to, going to bring in more revenue. So if we did some type of an investment, we know, we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to bring in additional revenue as well. That's why we would partner in this venture. To me, this particular agreement, I think, benefits you more than us. And that's why I think that there could be an additional negotiation that maybe staff and yourself can have. We could have an additional committee of the whole meeting if it doesn't pass tonight with any other negotiations that may take place. But with that being said, if we do not have any other comments, we have a motion and a second on the floor, but I believe Councilmember Hayden has two.
I just need to revise the motion. I'd said the wrong ordinance number. It should be 103-22. Motion to approve if the second will.
Yep. And there's a second, agree?
I'll revise my second.
Okay. The motion was to approve ordinance 103-22 as it was presented here tonight. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
No.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings? Gunter?
No.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
No.
Shepherd?
No.
Steinkie?
Aye.
That's three ayes, five nays. Motion failed.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 104-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 104-22, an ordinance repealing the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, Cape Coral Charter School Authority, Sections 26-3 and 26-8 in its entirety, and amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, Cape Coral Charter School Authority, Sections 26-4, 26-9, 26-10, 26-14, 26-15, and 26-17 regarding the Cape Coral Charter School Policies and Procedures, providing severability and an effective date.
Mr. Mason?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Quick update. I am going to go through each one of these items, and I'll make it very quick. Essentially, you know, if you'll recall, I guess a couple of years ago, when I wasn't here, you all, the city council made some determinations of, that we were going to support the charter school system by taking some of the debt off of them. At the same time, there was going to be some responsibilities on their part that we would absorb the back office work while they would focus in on the education side of things. And at the same time, as I understood it, that we would amend the ordinance to reflect some of these changes that we're talking about. All right. So the changes to the Chapter 26 that you'll see tonight is, and that were introduced back in December, consist of four different types. Basically, we're repealing some language that's in conflict with Florida statutes. We're repealing language that's no longer required in the ordinance. We're also adjusting and correcting some language to more accurately reflect what currently occurs with the, with the charter school authority between the city and the charter school authority, as well as clarifying certain sections associated with the operations of the charter school authority. We presented this information to the Charter School Governing Board on December 13. They did have one recommendation that I'll get to when we get to that particular section of the ordinance. And so very quickly, geographic boundaries, we're repealing that section. Geographic boundaries were repealed by the Florida statutes, repealed in Florida statutes, allowing students in any district within the school district to attend our charter schools. So, you know, as long as they apply, they can get here, and they're accepted, then they would be able to go to school in our municipal charter school system. We have a section that, for when we originally appointed the original board members, we're repealing that section as well, because it's simply no longer required in the ordinance. We also have the sections for the initial terms of the members back when, in 2004, when we originally developed the charter school authority. We're repealing those sections as well, as they're no longer necessary for the ordinance. When we changed the timing of when the city council elections would occur, we needed to make some changes here about when the board member or when the council member would be appointed to the, to the charter school board. So we're changing it from April 1st to December 1st. So we're changing it from April 1st to December 1st. We used to have our elections in March, and now we have them in November. So this adjustment just simply follows along with that in how the timing of when the change for the council member would occur with the appointment. For 2610, this again changes the timing associated with the elections from where we were originally in March and April. Same thing, we're updating the dates to reflect council elections in November. 2615A25, essentially, this one reflects the, the board recommends the council, they don't provide for adequate education facilities. That's not their responsibilities. Their responsibility is to recommend things to the city council. The city council takes action with regard to the buildings. And 2615A35, this again, the same thing. The charter school authority can make recommendations to the city regarding any policies regarding the, the facilities. As you'll recall, you amended the lease agreement that the facilities, in effect, were responsible for the facilities. So we needed to make some adjustments in the ordinance to reflect that as well. 2615A45, in this case, it's about leasing. I think we've had this discussion, and we wanted to clarify exactly what, you know, they're allowed to lease and how long they're allowed to lease it for. The, from an accounting perspective, you know, I mean, there's no, no more things, no such things as long-term or short-term leases, or capital leases versus non-capital leases. So we're, what we're showing here is that, yes, they can, but our ordinance and our charter, you know, talks a little bit differently that when you're going out there and you're borrowing money, long-term leases is usually considered to be a borrowing of money. And so we're, we are clarifying and putting in the language in here that they can do tangible personal property for, term for 12 months or less, but anything longer than 12 months would require city council approval. And then, of course, on leasing of real property, if the lease is approved first by the city council. And that's in addition to the, to the ordinance. 2615B19, we're looking at, we're clarifying what budgets they're actually adopting and clarifying that the city council actually adopts the official budget for the charter school. So when we bring in the charter school budgets for the final public hearings in September in general, this is when you're adopting the official budgets. And we needed to make sure that, you know, the charter school authority understood what their role was, and the city council understands what their role is as well. Recommend in writing, so 2615B33, this again clarifies the superintendent's responsibilities regarding revocation or suspension of, regarding teachers. And 2615C1 is added. We're adding a new responsibility and to, for the authority's tentative budget, adopting the tentative budget, and again, providing and making it very crystal clear that the city council has the power to add, delete, amend, or modify the authority's budget as necessary. 2617, this is the, this is basically the final section of the ordinance. When we drafted this ordinance back in 2004, brought it to the city council in 2005, part of what we had originally envisioned that the, that the charter school authority would utilize, city staff and the back office work in order to support their operations so they could focus on education. Somewhere around 2010, 2011 timeframe, that changed a little bit. And then we, in 2019, 2020, you all had a conversation here regarding that same matter, and now it's kind of flipped back to where it should be. But in this change, what we're doing is we're, we're making it a little more clear and clarifying that the, that the authority shall use the city departments. And we're adding this information technology in here, but for all intents and purposes, you're, you're utilizing the city for the back office work that is necessary to continue the operation of the charter school system. When we brought this to the charter school authority, they voted to recommend that the council add that the authority in the city shall approve service level agreements, and that this should be added to Section 2617. At the time, I told them, the board, that, you know, we didn't believe that that was necessary, and we certainly didn't support it. Absolutes such as that simply don't belong in an ordinance. It doesn't mean it can't be put in there, it's just that these types of things, you know, create a burden and create a problem that what happens when you don't agree. At the same time, service level agreements are generally a buy-sell type of approach to, you know, I sell you the service, this is my agreement, this is our agreement for what I'm going to provide to you. This ordinance isn't a buy-sell type of agreement. This ordinance requires the charter school authority to use us for their back office work. But at the same time, they also have a path if there is an issue between our services that we're providing, and it's not acceptable to the board. So what we're looking at here is that we don't recommend that you add this, this additional language to the ordinance. But, you know, certainly you're free to do as you wish, but we don't recommend that you add it. Because it will likely cause a burden that, at the same time, what happens if we don't agree on the services? So those are some of the concerns that we had, we expressed the same concerns. Their position was, is well, we'll agree, and I'm sitting here going, well, okay, that's fine, but that doesn't necessarily mean we will. So those are some of the issues that arose. And so staff recommends that the city council approve ordinance 10422 without modification. Thank you, I'm here for any questions.
Okay, and I'll open up public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 104-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 104-22?
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilmember Hayden.
Mark, on 2617, says we're gonna charge a fee for services like human resources. Didn't that used to be an in-kind?
No, this language has always been the exact same thing. We do charge a fee, they pay for our service.
Okay, 'cause...
They do, they do pay for our service, the actual cost.
Several years in there where the term "in-kind" was used.
There, what we originally started out with in 2005 was is that we developed a service, basically a labor rate that we would charge for our services. And so it, and for the, for a number of years, it worked out quite well. As the charter school grew, it appears that the labor rate never really changed. And then again, in 2011, it appears that things changed, and they started hiring their own staff, started doing their own back office work. And there seemed to have been a divergence between the city and the charter school authority until 2020, when I think it all came back together again.
Do we know how much, what that fee is, or how much we collect from them?
They pay the actual cost of the services that are provided. So the total cost of what that is, is, you know, whatever the staffing is that like, we have an accounts payable staff member that works there, you know, provides about, you know, they're paid, I don't know, I think it's $46,000 a year plus benefits. Accountants, you know, I have a dedicated accountant that does everything for the charter school authority. I have a budget analyst that, you know, doesn't work full-time, but does work with the charter school authority, we also have others. So we have a mechanism in place where we charge in a particular account for the time that's actually served, and we charge, and that's the charge that they have.
Okay.
So probably they pay us, I would say, I, no, I'm not gonna guess. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Hayden, I just wanted to clarify your motion. You made a motion to approve, was that with or without the additional language that staff was against?
The additional language is not currently in the ordinance.
Right, so are you, is your motion to approve the ordinance based on how it is written?
As it exists now.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 107-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Your honor, I have 105-22.
Did I skip the page? Yes, ma'am, I did, I apologize. 105-22.
Ordinance 105-22, an ordinance of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, amending ordinance 76-00 as amended, which granted People Gas System, a division of Tampa Electric Company, to operate a natural gas utility within the boundaries of the City of Cape Coral, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute the consent to assignment, providing severability and an effective date.
Okay, we'll turn it over to staff. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, nothing really to add here, this is just a simple consent to assignment between one subsidiary of TECO to a newly organized business unit with, as part of their organizational restructuring.
Okay, I now open up public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 105-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 105-22?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd? Steinke?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, now we'll move on to ordinance 107-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 107-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Fees, Section 2-24.3, Fee Imposed and Time of Payment Regarding Utility Capital Expansion Fees, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, we previously provided a comprehensive presentation on this, on this item along with its companion item, ordinance 108-22. So in the interest of time, we're not gonna present that information here today. However, the information is part of the public record, and it is part of the agenda packet.
Thank you, I now open up public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 107-22? Please come forward.
Good evening again, everyone. Hey, just real quick, looking at the text of this ordinance, it says six years. And again, $35,000, so we're looking at six grand a year that I'm gonna have to pay to hook up something I don't even want. And it doesn't work four out of every, excuse me, only works 100% four out of every 10 days. It's, that's a bad deal. You know, I don't know, the lien process versus a different type of lien, just in a different name, really helps me. But, I mean, can we, can we make the payment period 30 years? You know, and that's something that's transient, and since it becomes then, becomes an ad valorem, then I, when I sell my house, it goes to whoever I sell it for? But six years, that's a long time for something that's just gonna go up in price. But thank you, and again, have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 107-22? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 107-22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, the gentleman who's spoken a few times here tonight, when it comes to putting in city water, it's not necessarily just because we want to do it. There's a lot that goes on with the water table and what's available. So it isn't, we're just adding this to your taxes because we, we think that we need it. It's because it's gonna happen eventually anyways. So it's unfortunate that prices are up now, and that it could cost more. But if, if you want to know more of what the whole scheme of the city and getting everyone off of wells, if I could still be on a well, I would too. But I know that if I was on a well along with the 100 other thousand residents that are gonna be in Cape Coral, all the wells are gonna run dry. So just so you know, we're not doing this just to add another bill. We're doing this because this is what is gonna be forced upon us by the state at a point anyways in order for the water system. So if you want to contact me at the office, I can get you in touch with the, the city workers that explain why we're doing this and the timeframe, and show you the whole thing. So please reach out to anyone in the office for that. But I am for this, I just wanted to explain that it's not, it's not us just trying to add $40,000 to your, to your home, it's something you don't want. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion, second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 108-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 108-22, an ordinance repealing the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 19, Water and Sewer Utilities, Section 19-38, Contributions in Aid of Construction in Its Entirety, and amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 19, Water and Sewer Utilities, Section 19-1, 19-6, 19-54, and 19-55, amending Chapter 19, Water and Sewer Utilities, to create Section 19-5.2, Authority to Transfer Balances Regarding Contributions in Aid of Construction, to Establish an Area Method of calculation known as a unit of equivalent parcel instead of meter size, to establish an oversized parcel discount to establish a deferred payment agreement, providing severability and an effective date.
Mr. City Manager, I believe you made comments before, but I'll give you the opportunity again.
So as I said to the last item, Mr. Mayor, we provided a comprehensive presentation... Sorry, comprehensive presentation to city council recently during a regular meeting, not just at a workshop, although we did, also I believe, discuss it briefly at a workshop. So the, the information is contained in the backup that's available to the public.
Okay, thank you, I now open up public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 108-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve 108-22?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
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 Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10B introductions. We have ordinance 2-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 2-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 1 through 6, Block 1842, Cape Coral subdivision, Unit 45, Part 1, as more particularly described herein, from commercial to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located at 3103, 3107/3109, and 3111/3113 Southwest Santa Barbara Place, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 25, 2023.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 4-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 4-23, an ordinance amending City of Cape Coral Ordinance 81-22, which adopted the City of Cape Coral Operating Budget, Revenues and Expenditures, and Capital Budget for fiscal year 2023, by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of $61,658,994, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 25, 2023.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 7-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 7-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 29, Economic Development and Business Incentive Programs, by establishing Article 3, Economic Development Ad Valorem Tax Exemption, Sections 29-11 through 29-21, providing for purpose, intent, and authority, providing definitions, establishing an economic development ad valorem tax exemption, providing for consideration of applications and criteria for an exemption, providing for continuing performance in annual filings, providing for revocation and sunset date, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 25, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 8-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 8-23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a permissive use license agreement with United Way of Lee County, Inc., for the lease of property owned by the City of Cape Coral, being a portion of Block 56, Cape Coral, Unit 6, Part 3, Cape Coral subdivision, as described herein, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 25, 2023.
Is there any discussion by... Is there any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to ordinance 10-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 10-23, an ordinance amending the Cape Coral Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards and Commissions, Division 6, Cape Coral Construction Regulation Board, Sections 2-120.3 through 2-120.11 in its entirety, regarding abolishing the Cape Coral Construction Regulation Board, and by amending Chapter 6, Contractors and Construction Regulation Board, regarding contractors performing work in the city, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 25, 2023.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to ordinance 11-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 11-23, an ordinance approving and granting to sell... Excuse me. An ordinance approving and granting to Lee County Electric Cooperative, Inc., a perpetual easement for a right-of-way to be used for the construction, operation, and maintenance of one or more overhead and underground electric distribution lines across property owned by the city that is the area of the Sands Park located at 2718 Southwest 43rd Terrace, as more particularly described herein, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the easement. A copy of the easement is attached here too, and incorporated herein by reference, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be January 25, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to ordinance 106-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 106-22, an ordinance providing for the annexation of two parcels of land lying in the west one half of the northeast one quarter of the northwest one quarter of Section 21, Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida. Said parcels of land being more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for City of Cape Coral Fire Department and Utility Services, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be February 1, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? See, a none. We'll move on to ordinance 1-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 1-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Official Zoning District Map of All Property Within the Limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property lying in Section 16, Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, from commercial CA-1, a Lee County designation, to commercial corridor zone. Property is located at 2301 Southwest Pine Island Road, providing severability and effective date. The public hearing will be February 1, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council?
No.
See, a none. We'll move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Welsh, report.
No real report. I'm glad to be back, and happy to get this year on a good start.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll save anything that I have for the next meeting in the interest of time. No report?
Okay. Councilmember Cummings, report.
Yes, so, I want to make sure I'm doing this correctly. I wanted to bring something forward. Just gonna talk about it, and... So, okay, thank you. So, starting, basically, I'm gonna ask if I can put a project together, and I'm calling it a business in a box, here for the entrepreneurs that are wanting to open up a small business here in Cape Coral, Florida. So, starting a new business can be an exciting and challenging process, both careful planning and the right support. It can also be very rewarding. I would like to bring forward a business in a box. A business in a box is a package that provides everything a new business owner needs to get started. It typically includes a detailed business plan, marketing materials, operational guidelines, and other resources to help the business owner to launch and grow their business, which is helping new startup businesses, giving them proper steps, basically going from A to Z. This will make it much easier for them, like a turnkey operation. Starting a business often requires navigating a complex set of regulations and procedures to help a customer understand the steps they need to take to open a business in our city. You can conclude in the following information in a packet. I'm just listing a few examples. A list of the business licenses and permits required by the city, along with information on how to obtain each one. Contact information for local agencies that can provide assistance and guidance to entrepreneurs, such as Chamber of Commerce or Small Business Development Center. Information on any specific regulations that apply to customers' business, such as zoning laws, health codes, or building codes. A checklist of tasks that the customers will need to complete in order to open their businesses, such as registering their business name, setting up a business bank account, or purchasing insurance. Links to online resources that can provide additional information and assistance, such as city website or State Department of Revenue. And I feel like if we can put this together in a packet, it will be a lot easier for when people come to the city, wanting to know, where do I start for permits licensing? So, it would be like a package that we would hand them, so it would have everything in it. So, I'm asking if I can move this forward to put something together. It wouldn't cost anything, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think you could possibly work with staff and get them to help you with some type of program like this, and I don't know how much engagement that the council has to have with...
Mr. Mayor, I actually, first of all, I think it's a great idea. I know the council member raised that in our 101 discussions. However, I want to propose an alternate, and that is, you recently created the Cape Competes Advisory Board, which was designed to help our businesses. And I think, and you know, you've appointed Councilmember Long as the liaison to that board. I think that this would be an excellent assignment for them to also be involved in, if there's a way for the council member to work with the Capes Competes Council. That would be my suggestion, rather than just to have it be an initiative that's between staff and a council member. Because, again, that's why you put the Cape Competes Council together, to help us identify how we can assist businesses flourish in the city, and especially small businesses. I just offer that as an idea.
Yep. Councilmember Long?
Yeah, just a bit of input. I think it's a good idea. My private business, part of what feeds my family, is how difficult it is to get businesses running in different, varying government municipalities, because you have to deal here, and go here, and go there, and there's not necessarily one IM for a fee, right? But there's not necessarily one stop shop for where you need to go for each specific industry, for example. I don't know, I don't think it's a bad idea that the city manager had brought forward with regards to the Horizon Council, but I'm not sure that we wouldn't be able to also do something here at the city level, because those regulations would be different if we were to initiate that effort at the county level than it would be for those that might need city business taxes, for example. If you're in the county, and if you're in the city, you'll need a city business tax receipt and a county business tax receipt, for example.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember, if I said Horizon Council, I may have misspoken. I meant Cape Competes, which is...
Oh, okay. No, you didn't. That's my mistake. Okay. Yeah, I mean, if that's your assessment as to how we navigate that, I wouldn't have any problem doing that. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you. I think it's a good idea, too. I don't know that we need an ordinance or a resolution to make this happen, so I don't think this has to go through the traditional way of having a second, and you working the staff and all that. I think, since it's your idea, I think it would make sense to do what the city manager said, and work with Cape Competes. Am I correct on that? We don't need official action here?
No, I think this is more of a, I would classify this as almost a personal project that Councilmember Cummings is wanting to embark on, and, you know, she has that right. I don't think we need to have an ordinance or anything of that nature. She can work with staff and Cape Competes and develop a program. And maybe when she's done, she can bring it back and show it to us.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other report? Councilmember Cummings, before I go to the next council member?
Had a... No, it's... Sorry, I'm kind of thinking here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot. I just wanted to make sure that you were finished.
No, I'm good. Thank you for support. Seriously, thank you. This means a lot to me. So, thank you, guys, everybody.
Okay. Councilmember Hayden?
One thing I may need to ask for a second on, and I think I may have mentioned this a while back. When we were up at Florida League of Cities with the youth council, I was approached by the person leading the programs that we were one of few, if not the only, youth council that was working as an advisory board, meaning they had to follow Sunshine laws. And he recommended thinking about changing that, because all the other youth councils in the state didn't have to fall into the auspices of Sunshine, and it's important, because a lot of these kids go to school together, they're texting each other, they're attending events together, and they'd like more of an opportunity to talk to each other, rather than just in a meeting setting, open meeting setting. So, I would like to take a look at revising the ordinance to take them out of being an advisory council. They'll still be able to make recommendations to council. They'll still be able to have meetings, but it wouldn't fall under the guidelines of Sunshine, which I think is important for these kids to have more of a freedom of discussion than what they're able to do now. So, I would like a second to look into, and I've been able to compile, what other youth councils are doing around the state, what they call themselves, how they operate. So, I'm in a better position now to look at revising that ordinance, if I can get a second to look at.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Long, report.
No report, Mayor.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I would just like to say to the citizens that are watching, to be patient when it comes to all the things we're dealing with from this storm. I've been getting a lot of emails about cleanup, about traffic lights not working, about signs knocked over, things like that. And I just want everyone to know that the city is doing their best and working very hard to get all these things accomplished. Please be patient. They're not being ignored. Everyone is working diligently to achieve the repairs and replacement of things, as well as the cleanup. So, don't think it's being overlooked. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Steinke, report.
Thank you. I'd echo Councilmember Shepherd's remarks. I heard just the other day that in our city, we have about 40,000 signs that need attention. So, the magnitude of the job is large, and so I couldn't agree more. I'd also like to put a shout out to our Cape Coral Police Department over the hiatus. I had the opportunity to participate and adopt a family, and as a part of that, our Cape Coral Police Department, their motor unit, and additional units helped us make our way through the city and bring Christmas to families that otherwise wouldn't have it. And so, thank you very much for your service and that effort. I was active through our hiatus, continued to meet with our city manager. On the 20th, I was approved by the Terrors Development Council, and if we get out of here soon, I might make the meeting tomorrow morning. But we had our, I had my orientation with them. I'm excited about the opportunity to bring Cape Coral's interests to our county, and make sure that we're properly represented there. And attended Budget Review Committee this week, and attended Gator Mike's Grand Opening. It's a great new facility. When we talk about having attractions to come to the city, it's a great new addition. That Pine Island Corridor brushed up quite a bit, and quite an attraction out on the road to attract the attention, and give something new and fresh for our citizens to participate in.
That's it. Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to welcome my colleagues and staff back from, you know, our vacation or holiday time, and I hope you and your family had a joyous holiday season. I'd also like to thank everyone in the city at hand in making the holiday employee luncheon a huge success again. You know, it was great to be able, I realize it's only a simple lunch, but just the opportunity to be able to say thank you for all their hard work and dedication throughout the year. So, I was glad to see that luncheon not only happen again, but be a huge success. Back a few weeks ago, during hiatus, as Councilmember Steinke had mentioned, I was still active through the hiatus. I attended a virtual Florida League of Cities Big Coalition Meeting. We did do that meeting virtually. We will be having a in-person meeting, I believe, in February in Jacksonville, so I look forward to attending that. On 12/15, I attended the Cape Coral Construction Industry Dinner Board Induction Ceremony, where I swear in the officers. Back in December, I also attended the swearing-in ceremony of our new police officers for our police department. Also, I attended the, had an invitation and attended the inauguration of the Governor DeSantis, and also attended the Governor's Ball in Tallahassee. Back on the 10th, a few days ago, I attended Governor DeSantis's press conference in Benita Springs. I believe Councilmember Cummings was there as well. And also, myself, the city manager, various staff members met with Commissioner Ruane and other members of Pine Island Fire Department, and discussed annexation throughout the city. I believe that's going to be an ongoing discussion. We will have future meetings from there. I think staff between our water department, our fire department, and the city manager's office will have additional one-on-one meetings before we have a subsequent meeting sometime in the future. Also, this week, I filmed the pet of the month again for the Cape Coral Animal Shelter, so stay tuned to that video. I think that was my third video, if I recall correctly. The first two, I'm two-for-two. They were, both pets were adopted within about a week of that video, so hopefully, we can make it three in a row. And I believe, if I recall, the pet of the week was Boo Boo, so make sure you stay tuned to that video. And also, today, I attended the Metropolitan Planning Organization Executive Committee Meeting, so that is the extent of my report. Mr. or Madam City Attorney, report?
I have no report.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to congratulate our very own Betty Castillo on earning her Certified Municipal Clerk's Certification. I know it's a very... Really, really force, well over 110 hours of training, and now you are a certified city clerk. So, thank you. Congratulations. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Betty. Time and place of the future meeting, we have a committee, the whole meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 18, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.